Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start this morning's meeting with an invocation by Councilman McAtee, and then we'll ask Councilman White to lead us in the flag.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to review the financial plans for the city for next year. We pray that the decisions that we'd make would be in line with your priorities, that you grant each department head, as well as the city staff and the council wisdom, as we evaluate what you would have us to do as far as meeting the needs of our people. We thank you for the way you've been faithful in the past, and we trust you for the future, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we'd like to call to order the meeting of the city council, and adjourn the meeting of the city council, and reconvene as the finance committee. And we have four things on our agenda this morning from the finance standpoint. First of all, item A on your agenda is a presentation of overview of the budget, and we'll have presentations from the Development Services Group, Information Technology, and the Police Department, and then we'll adjourn and do some other business for the council. So, city manager, do you have any comments you'd like?
Well, Doug Dollar's going to start us out this morning, and last week Doug came up and gave us a general overview of the budget. He's going to go into a little bit more of the process this morning before we get into the individual departments. Doug?
Thank you. Well, I wanted to start off with some of the standards that we follow as we develop the budget each year. Obviously, we follow state law on the development of our budget, and you'll see that in the fund summary section of the budget. We kind of talked about that a little bit last week. That's the section of the book that will officially be adopted as the budget for the city, and we follow the structure laid out in the Municipal Budget Act. The Government Finance Officers Association also has the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award that recognizes governments that follow the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting, and GFOA's best practices on budgeting. Each year, our budget is reviewed by GFOA and peer reviewers to see if we meet those best practices, and GFOA looks at our budget document not only as a financial document, but as a communications device, an operations guide, and a planning tool. And for last year, about 1,300 jurisdictions received the Distinguished Budget Award, and these are not just cities, but schools, counties, water districts, those sorts of things. In Oklahoma, six jurisdictions received the award last year: Ardmore, Bartlesville, Norman, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and Tulsa County. So, we're one of six within the state that meets those best practice guidelines from GFOA. But what I'm most pleased about is that we meet the standards also for their special performance measures recognition. That means we received outstanding ratings from GFOA on their performance measures section of their criteria. And last year, only 24 jurisdictions out of those 1,300 that received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award received that recognition for performance measures. Our Leading for Results process and our focus on performance has been rated by GFOA of worthy of special recognition, and that recognition isn't just for the budget office, but it's really for the commitment that the council, the city manager's office, department heads on down through the city have made to performance and the importance that we've placed on that. And so, I'm very pleased that we've received that performance measures recognition for the last couple of years, and just want to let you know that what we're doing on performance measures is not just the basics, we're going above and beyond what's required in standard practice. Well, let's turn to some of the big numbers for the budget again. We've kind of looked at these before, but it never hurts to review them. The general fund budget totals $400.8 million. $259.7 million is the total for other operating funds within the city, and $414 million for our non-operating funds. So, the grand total's just under $1,028 million. We talked about this a little bit last week, but just wanted to, again, emphasize the difference between our operating and non-operating funds. The general fund is our largest fund, and it's a piece of the operating funds. It makes up about 60% of that total operating budget, and while there are no restrictions on how the general fund can be spent, the other, not other, operating funds are dedicated to specific purposes. So, some of those major operating funds include police and fire sales tax, the E-911 fund, zoo sales tax, airports, utilities, and stormwater drainage, and these funds are where the operations of the city are funded. The non-operating side of the budget is where most of the capital is funded. Some of the significant funds in this category include MAPS III, the Capital Improvement Projects Fund, the hotel motel tax, the portion that funds fairgrounds, capital improvements, debt service, grants management. We segregate these funds from the operating budget, so it's easier to get a true picture of how the budget changes for our core operations each year. Well, as we look at the revenue we receive, again, $1,028 million is our total budget. Taxes are the biggest revenue source, totaling $568.4 million, or about 55% of the total. Sales tax, of course, being the largest source there, and it's over $417 million of the total. Use tax and property tax are the next largest taxes. Fees and charges include things like franchise fees, licenses and permits, and stormwater drainage fees. They count for about 15.8% of the total. Transfers in consist of transfers from the public trust for operating costs for water, wastewater, solid waste, and airport services. Federal grants are about 3.3% of the total. And then, fund balance represents a fairly big chunk of our budget at about 16%, or $162.8 million. And some of the funds that have budgeted significant amounts of fund balance include the MAPS III sales tax at $49 million, the city and schools' capital project use tax at $14.3 million, and our capital improvement projects fund at $25.3 million. As we turn to the expenditures, I wanted to start at the smaller level of the general fund, a smaller, under $400 million, and kind of work our way up to that big total. And when you look at the general fund, you can really see this. It's where we have the most flexibility with our spending, and you can see the emphasis on public safety. Again, nearly two-thirds of our general fund budget is for public safety. The next biggest category there, public services, is at 17.4%. This would be public works, neighborhood services, planning. Culture and Recreation in the general fund is our Parks and Recreation Department and our spending on the Cox Center and the Chesapeake Arena. And then, General Government is a larger share of the general fund, simply because that's the only place that we fund general government operations. So, the city manager's office, finance, personnel, municipal councillor's office, city auditor's office, city clerk, general services, they're all funded in the general fund, and they come in just under 9%. As we move out to that larger operating budget, again, looking at the total operations for the city, we add in those funds that really focus in a lot on our enterprise funds that fund things like water, wastewater, airports, solid waste, and so you'll see the public services share of the budget gets bigger when we look at that operating budget, about almost a third of the budget there. Public safety is still significant at well over, at over half the budget, and culture and recreation grows a little bit as well, as we add in the hotel motel tax and the zoo sales tax into that culture and recreation piece. Now, general government gets a little bit smaller, because we didn't really add any more general government, it's just that piece that's in the general fund. As we move out to the full budget now, the shape of the pie, the slices of pie change a little bit more, especially as we add in MAPS III into that culture and recreation slice. That slice gets bigger. A lot of our capital, most of our capital, in fact, is in public services, and so that slice grows as well. Public safety, again, still over a third of the budget, but when you look at that total budget, and you put in that non-operating, the capital stuff, it changes the complexion of the pie just a bit. Again, general government gets a little bit smaller, again, because we're not adding any other general government in that non-operating portion of the budget. Just one more time to look at how we divide the budget by those definitions that the Municipal Budget Act gives us. State law, personal services is about 43% of our overall total. Other services, which includes things like utilities, contracts, some of our payments to some of the city trusts like COTPA and the zoo trust, fall under other services. Supplies are a pretty small portion of our total. Capital outlay is pretty significant, at about a quarter of the budget. Debt service, what pays for our GO bonds, covers about 9% of the budget, and then transfers out to some of the other trusts are at 4%. Now, last week, we looked briefly at the strategic planning process, talked about the citizen survey and council priorities, and I want to spend just a few minutes talking about the strategic business plans that the departments developed as part of their Leading for Results process. The strategic business plans are created by departments every other year, and part of developing that plan is identifying the major issues facing the department and/or their customers in the next two to five years, and the consequences of not addressing those issues. So generally, they're expressed as a trend, and so department statements, or department issue statements, will usually begin with statements like the growing demand for X, or the increasing complexity of some issue. And that'll be followed by the consequence if that issue is not addressed. So, the statements usually conclude with, "If not addressed, will result in X." And many people have commented that these issue statements often sound rather bleak, because they seem to be focused on negative outcomes, that if they're not addressed, these are the bad things that are going to happen. But the idea is to identify the challenges being faced by the department, and what will happen if they don't meet those challenges, in order to motivate a proactive approach to dealing with the issue. Now, connected to each issue statement in the strategic business plans are strategic results to measure their progress in addressing these issues, and there may be multiple strategic measures for each issue, or there may just be one, depending on the department and the issue. After developing the issue statements and strategic results, departments determine what strategies they will pursue to maintain or improve performance in the areas being measured. The strategic business plans also identify all the services performed by the department, which are grouped into programs with specific performance measures for each program. All similar programs are grouped into lines of business. So, for example, picking up stray animals is a service of the Development Services Department. That service is grouped with other similar services, and that's in the animal control program, which is part of the Animal Welfare Division, or Animal Welfare Line of Business within the Development Services Department. So, just kind of wanted to go through that. When you hear those negative issue statements, it's not that the departments have, again, a bleak outlook, but that's the structure of our Leading for Results program to identify those issues that need to be focused on. So, that's all I have. We'll be turning over to Development Services, Information Technology, and Police. In the coming weeks, we have other departments that will be presenting. June 11th, we have budget adoption. The week before, I don't have it on the slide, but June 4th, we'll hold a public hearing, and obviously, citizens have an opportunity to comment at any point in the process, but that's the official point, when citizens who want to comment on the budget may do so. And so, unless there are any other questions.
Are there any questions, Doug? Good job.
All right. Thanks. We'll turn that over to Bob and Development Services.
And before we get on to that, this is sort of a milestone. We have a budget that exceeds $1 billion this year. It's the first time ever in the history of the city. And I would like to remind my fellow councilmen that every penny the city has, we extract from our citizens. So, as we go forward in spending this money, I think we need to really be cautious about how we do it, to make sure that we are responsible for, to our citizens for what goes on here. Thank you. Bob?
Good morning. I'm Bob Teener, Development Services Director. Our mission statement basically reflects the department's commitment to customer service and the community. I'd like to introduce my key staff. Rick Wickenkamp is the Assistant Director, and Carol Reed is our Management Specialist. They're the administrative part of my staff. They help me do the day-to-day operations personnel. Catherine English, she's the Division Head at Animal Welfare. David Adcock. In the back is the Division Head for the Development Center. You don't see David over here very often, but in the coming months, we'll have some building code amendments, and David will be here. He's an expert in the field. Charles Locke is the Code Enforcement Supervisor. You see him every week with the dilapidated and unsecured housing. J.J. Chambliss is Subdivision in Zoning. He's, when I'm not here on Tuesday to talk about the zoning cases, he'll be the one that's here. And those are the five divisions. Now, I'm going to talk about the issues that we've identified that really we're facing with our department. Code enforcement priorities, as you all know, there's a, there's a demand for us to resolve as many code enforcement violations as quickly as possible. And this issue not only deals with code enforcement as we know it, but it also includes construction inspections, because that's a big piece of public safety, the inspection for building permits. The second one is our live exit community. The community feels it's important that our shelter operates well, that we, we're trying to achieve a 75% live exit rate, and for us to be able to manage that exit rate, that reduces the number of animals in the community, reduces the number of euthanasias. And the third issue is the development review. This is the processing of zoning applications, subdivision applications that we do with zoning and subdivision that you see every week. Development process coordination, that's the Development Center, the review of the building permits, to make sure people get a timely review of their permits and are able to get their construction underway as soon as possible. The last is public safety priorities, and this is really dealing with our ability to get out and deal with loose animals, or if an animal creates a danger to a human, be able to respond in a reasonable amount of time. This first strategy is code enforcement. We're trying by 2015 to have at least 50% satisfaction with our code enforcement. One thing about code enforcement, when you go out and give someone a notice about a violation, they're not going to be happy. Now, the person that turned them in might be. So, it's hard to ever achieve more than 50% satisfaction in this category. But we're doing a few things here that... Last year, we added five positions in the code enforcement positions in the budget. This allows us to do a weekend, we'll have inspectors in the field in the weekend. That's the first time we've really done that, except in special situations. And this next slide kind of shows you the impact of that. That program started in December this year, and the red line indicates the increase in the number of front yard parking citations that we've been able to write. That number is almost 1,400 a month additional inspections, or citations. And what I want to state here is that December, January, February, we don't, we don't do a lot of high grass, high weeds, that kind of thing. So, this gives us the ability to concentrate on those kind of violations. Now, in April and May, the high grass, high weed will take, they'll be the majority of the inspections that we'll do, and the front yard parkings will back off. But this is an indication of the possible impact that adding those positions will have.
So, Bob, you see it's cyclical, that during the winter months, when we wean grasses down, those resources will be allocated to front yard parking, and those numbers will be high, and then as grass, tall grass and weeds go, you'll reallocate these folks toward those complaints that are coming in, and so there'll be a little bit less of an effort on front yard parking, although we'll still be out enforcing those as we can, and we'll be more focused on tall grass and weeds.
It gives us the ability to allocate our resources to try and address the biggest concern at the time.
But I think a good point you made by city manager, just because we're in one season, the other non-seasonal violations are still enforced. Maybe not with the same vigor, but they are enforced, so we don't want to have a misunderstanding in our citizens that they can park in their, in their yards during the high grass seasons. Thank you.
Yeah, if the grass is high enough, we may not see the car, but...
Larry? Bob, in that regards, your people would be going out to respond, for example, on the weekends, to a tall grass and weed complaint, or during the work, during the week even for that. While they're out there, if they observe front yard parking going on, what is their, what is their directive to do?
If they, if they are responding to another complaint, and they see a violation, they're supposed to write the ticket. The problem you have there, if you, if you see violations, you're not responding to a complaint, then it's harder for you to get to your complaint. But yes, if they're, if they're in an area and they, they were responding to high grass and weed, and then the next door neighbor's got a front yard parking violation, they should write the ticket. And these inspectors on the weekend will, they'll have an area of the city that they're responsible for, they'll have a proactive area that they'll, they'll be responsible, so they'll function just like our inspectors during the week. And we just started in December, so it's really hard to tell what that impact's going to be, but we're, we look, we think it'll really be a good help for us. This next one is the live exit rate. The goal here is to get as many of the animals that enter our shelter out alive, and we were able to... We're at 58% right now. We anticipate FY14 to be at 65%. So, we're, we feel pretty comfortable about that 2015 number getting to 75%. This next slide kind of shows you something that's happened here for us. We've had, for the first nine months of this last year, our intake in the shelter has been reduced by 14%, which means the fewer animals we take in, that supports our ability to increase that live exit rate. I think Catherine told me that for April, we were up at 17%. So, the real reason that this is, or one of the reasons we feel like this is happening is in January of, in July of '11, the council adopted an ordinance that allowed us to use half of our fees that we charge for adoptions. We put it into a community spade and neuter program, so anyone in Oklahoma City can bring their animal in and have a free spade and neuter. And that's one of the key ways to lower the number of animals that we have to deal with in the shelter, and this slide reflects that. So, I don't think we can take all the credit from that program, but it's definitely helping.
Bob, do you have to meet criteria in order to bring your animal in, or can anybody bring their animal in?
You have to be a resident of Oklahoma City.
Okay, but that's it?
Right. The, the program started in January of 2012, and we've been able to spade or neuter almost 4,500 additional animals that we wouldn't have done without that program. So, we feel that it's really been a successful program.
That's terrific. Thank you, Catherine, for bringing that idea forward.
And we do have a waiting list, so, I mean, there's, there's no shortage of people that want to get that, take the advantage of that service. This next strategic result, this refers to the cases that we process through subdivision and zoning. Our goal here is to try to get an applicant a result, if it's a subdivision plat, within 60 days, 80% of the time. We're currently at 67%, and part of the issue there is that we don't control the number of continuances that we have at Planning Commission, and Planning Commission is trying, they try to, if there's protests on a case, they try to get the applicant, the protesters together. You know, they'll take multiple continuances to try to work out the problems before they, they get back to the Planning Commission. We're doing a little better with the zoning applications that you guys see every Tuesday. We're at 85% there. I've talked to developers that rezone property all over the country, and they, they tell me that our process is as good as it is, because you, 120 days to get a rezoning application is really pretty good, and we feel comfortable that that helps them. You know, once you get your property rezoned, then you can go through the building process and get your permit, and, you know, we're able to allow them to develop as quickly as, you know, possible, because the longer it takes them, the more money it costs. The next one is the Development Center process. We're, currently, we, last year, we changed our goals here. We had 100% completion within 20 working days. This is for review of commercial construction plans. We changed it to 15 to try to be more, more efficient, more effective for our customers, and currently, we're at 98%. So, we anticipate the end of the year, we'll be at 98%. Same with our, the remodel plans. We reduced that from 15 days to 10 working days, and we're almost meeting that goal at 98%. The last one I'd like to talk a little bit about is the construction inspection within two working days. Currently, in the book, you'd see that we, we do the inspections at 66, within two days, 66% of the time. We had a recent construction inspection audit that identified some inaccuracies in how we were reporting those numbers, and so we went back and looked at those, and the actual number has been 84%. So, we're, we're doing several things to try to improve that. This next slide kind of shows those. We've been able to issue cellular phones to the inspectors in the field. You know, that allows them to contact the builder or the contractor, and it really cuts down on rejections based on the, they get, they get to a site and the door's locked, nobody there. It's really worked out, helps the communication between our supervisors and our field guys. We also provide customer training for all our inspectors. It was probably the first time in 10 years, anyway, that they'd had customer service, and we felt like, you know, it was a good time to remind them that our, you know, these guys are our customers, and we need them, you know, you need to treat them with respect. Couple of the other things we've done, we implemented a policy where we brought our Inspector twos in early. They come in at 7:30, and they prepare the inspector's list of inspections for the day, so they're now able to get out at 8 o'clock in the morning or close to 8 o'clock. That really adds an hour a day of working time to each of our inspectors, and that improves our efficiency. Couple of other things, the, the construction audit, they, they reviewed our peer cities, and they looked at the numbers and how long it takes them to do the same type of inspections. And so, what we're going to do is, and we started this process, we're surveying these peer cities to see what they do different, what's, you know, what practice are they doing that we can use to improve our time. And, you know, I feel that we made some significant progress, but it never hurts to look at these other cities and see how they're doing, and so...
I just wanted to add, I mean, this seems to represent many of the recommendations made by the city auditor. Was, was there any recommendations by the city auditor that we didn't implement?
Well, we're, the audit set it up to be done by December 31st this year, so we're, we're working through all the audits, but there are a couple that we're, we have to look at to see if we're going to be able to audit. An example of that is some of our peer cities do, inspectors do multiple inspections, and really, the current state law doesn't allow us to do that. You know, if you're an electrical inspection, you do an electrical inspection. You can't really do a plumbing inspection. And so, we're going to, we're going to talk with the state and the inspection, the electrical and building inspector commissions, and see if that's an option of changing state law to address those audits, audit recommendations, but...
And I'd like to acknowledge that that was, we couldn't unilaterally do that, that was, we'd have to, they could get additional authority to do.
But, yeah, we've got a, we're, we've got a work process, and we're going through all the audits, recommendations, and by the end of the year, we'll have those addressed, and we'll either have them implemented, or we'll have a reason why we can't implement them, or we'll be in the process of implementing.
Right.
Bob, I'd really like to thank you for taking such a positive approach to that. I think it's just a great example of where these audits, you know, really help refine process and bring great results back, and adopting it in a cooperative way is extremely helpful. So, thank you for taking such a hard look at it.
I appreciate that. I hate to say this out loud, but when, two years ago, they asked me about it, and I said, "Yeah, I'd like to do it, so you can give us this information." It's been a little painful since I got the information, but, you know, that's how you learn to manage, is you, you have someone look at it from a different perspective, and then, I mean, it's really helped us, and we've already done some things that, that have improved it, and...
There's been a lot of things. We go, there's a lot of history on the things we've improved, from increasing the staffing to how we've handled some things, some personnel issues that we've dealt with. This is the one measurement that I look at weekly. Bob sends me a report every Monday afternoon as to what the status is on the building inspections from the week before. I look at a lot of data throughout the month, but it's the only one I look at weekly, is building inspection progress.
And then the last bullet, we do an annual inspect, annual survey of our biggest customers. We take our 50 largest customers, and then, I think the last, we sent over, sent out over 500 surveys to people that work in our process, and the results of this last survey, we improved in, in all the areas, timeliness, friendliness, helpfulness, and this overall service. And we feel, we just sent out this year's survey, so we're looking forward to see how those responses come back in, but we've clearly improved from when, where we were a couple of years ago. This last one, this is the public safety strategy. This is our ability to respond to Priority One calls in the field, animal welfare. We're still working with IT to come up with a way to measure the time. We have some, we have a computer-aided dispatch system, but our, you know, our numbers aren't accurate. But there's a couple of things we feel like here that, that will help us. We recently looked at the revenues that we... We recently looked at the revenues that we, uh, all our fees that we charge at the shelter. And they hadn't been changed in several years. And so, we're, you'll see an ordinance amendment in the near future that increases our adoption rate from $50 to $60. And there's a few other minor changes in the fees, but that gives us the ability to hire another field officer. So, if that ordinance is adopted, we'll, in July 1st, we'll have another field officer, you know, in the field. Will help our response time. Additionally, we, um, just implement, we put the GPS monitoring on our vehicles. So, that allow the inspe, the supervisors in the office, when they get a call, they can identify the closest vehicle and have them respond to a Priority One call. So, we feel like that's gonna improve our efficiencies. And additionally, we, um, for the last six months of the year, we didn't have a supervisor in the field officer section.
Bob, could you define for the audience out there what a Priority One call is?
Priority One call is anytime a animal puts a human or another animal in imminent danger. So, an example of that would be like livestock loose on a road. You know, the livestock's in danger getting hit by a car, and the person in the car is in danger. So, uh, we respond to those calls, you know, whenever we get them. And we, you know, I know it, it's a two-hour priority. You can't, it depends on where your staffing is and where they're at. But those are the types of things that we respond to there. But, uh, in December this year, or last year, we were able to hire a supervisor. He has 20 years of law enforcement experience. He's a trainer. He, we feel that he's gonna be able to manage this, this section and really help improve our efficiencies. So, he's just been on since December, but we're already showing indications that he's, he's gonna be able to help us. Okay, now, I'm gonna just go through the, uh, our different divisions in the budget. I'll just talk about these briefly. The admin section is a, just, just over 2.1 million. This section, this division, this, that money is all the chargebacks from IT, the print shop, risk management. So, the, so the numbers are a little high, but those, that covers the entire department. And that's, all that money goes through the admin section. The next one is Animal Welfare. We have three divisions. There's 51. With the addition of the, the control officer, there'll be 51 employees. Animal Control are the employees in the field. Shelter, the animal shelter are the employees that take care of the animals on a daily basis. And then, the vet services, we have a full-time vet on, on staff, and they take care of the care of the, uh, animals in the shelter. I just need to say, back the end of October, November, there was a rumor that Bevo had disappeared from the University of Texas. Now, we took that picture in early November. Now, I'm not saying that's right, but, you know, I guess everybody needs some time away from bad football. So, just some stats on the Animal Welfare Division. We get 24,000 service calls a year. We have 15 people in the field. We work seven days a week. We work, if we have a priority call, we have somebody on-call 24 hours a day. So, that gives you an idea of the number of service calls we get. Uh, we process 27,000 animals through the shelter every year. We do the 9,000 sterilizations. That includes those 4,500 that we did with, with the program. One thing I'd say there, we have, we have 9,000 visitors a month to the shelter. The staff that we have does a really good job, I think, dealing with the, the number of people in. I have a story about this cat. Uh, it came in in a litter. It was about two weeks old. And this cat, uh, just couldn't calm down. It was meowing and crying and fussing. So, one of our staff persons got a wa, a washcloth and wrapped it up and put it in its pocket and walked around for a couple hours in the shelter, and it automatically, you know, soon as they put it in the pocket, it calmed down, and it, it was pretty comfortable for a while. So, that's just an example of how the people at the shelter really care about these animals. And, uh, and it's a, you know, it's a hard job. So, uh, the next division's Code Enforcement. They have two divisions. Basically, the, the, this division takes care of, uh, tall grass and weeds, uh, dilapidated, unsecured structures that you see every Tuesday, yard parking, zoning problems, business license problems. Anything somebody can complain about, or some way they can violate the code, these guys deal with it. And, uh, we have 28, 29 officers in the field. As you probably know, we respond to complaints. We have 620 square miles, so, you know, each inspector has an area they cover. But we do do a proactive, uh, program. We have 28 neighborhoods, and this map reflects where those neighborhoods are. And our goal is that once a month, uh, one of our inspectors, they have to inspect their proactive area. And what that means is they drive through and they look for violations. And the one thing that we found is that the proactive areas have a higher homeowner resolution. You know, our inspector goes to him and says, "You have to, you need to paint your house," without giving you a notice. Uh, the response from those pe, from those individuals is better. And we've documented that. Now, we do have 29 inspectors now, but we've got 28 of them that have an assigned proactive area. And it's, I mean, it's really a pretty good program. Some of the stats for Code Enforcement, we do over 96,000 inspections a year. Uh, we issue about 25,000 notices. So, every call, uh, action center complaint, we respond to, which is almost 100,000. Most of them do not result in us having to get a, give a notice. That means that they're either resolved by the owner, or there's not a violation. We get a lot of not a violation. And we do, we remove 50,000 illegal signs a year. This is the, those trash signs you see on the side of the road. We have four part-time inspectors that go out, and they work weekends after hours to pick those up. You know, we, we've tried to, uh, write citations, but it, it really works out better just to pick them up. Because it's so hard to get, you know, a conviction on those types of signs. Because typically, the person that it represents, they're not the one that put the sign there, and we can't prove it because we didn't see them putting it there, and it really, uh, but this program works pretty well. We also coordinate with, uh, parks, public works, and utilities, and do two yearly citywide sweeps where we pick up about 5,000 a year doing that. The budget here is about, uh, just over, just under 3,500. We have 42 positions.
Bob, can I ask you a question about Code Enforcement? The, the planning department just recently completed a study on vacant and abandoned properties, which they estimate is about 12,000 in the Oakland City limits. They estimated that, they pointed out a dramatic increase in police, fire, and animal welfare calls to those properties. And they felt like the solution, or one solution, lied with the development department, and they want, they, is they're advocating to spend about 800,000 to hire eight inspectors. I guess the question would be, how, how much coordination was there between the consultant and the development department? And do you think with eight inspectors and that kind of investment, assuming we could find a way to come up with that 800,000, that we could make an impact?
Well, Charles and his staff was involved in, through that entire process, looking at, because they wanted to look at what kind of information we had about vacant and abandoned buildings. And, uh, you know, it's hard to say if eight people is enough to make an impact, but it's clearly, uh, gives us the ability to do some things that we haven't, we're not able to do now. And, you know, we're supportive of however that, you know, that program works out. We'll, we'll participate however we need to. Because if we can take vacant and abandoned buildings off the, you know, off the list, and that gives us, that cuts down on our work as well. So, but it, I don't have a good answer if eight, eight is enough. You know, it's, it's hard to say. The Development Center is the next, uh, division. This is construction inspections, plan review, and permits and licensing. These sections all have to work together. You come in, you, you submit for a permit, you go to one section. They process it, send it to plan review for your review of the permit. And then, construction inspection does the inspections as a, you know, as you're in the construction phase. Some of the statistics here, we, we do over 107,000 inspections a year. There's about 2,000 commercial, new commercial plans, 7,000 residential plans. The budget here is about 6.7 million. This, this division does over 11 million in business. The, the plans they review generate, you know, 11 million dollars. So, that kind of gives you an idea there. Uh, there's about almost 70,000 licenses and permits that we have to do. This, this division has 84 staff. It's the biggest division in the department. Subdiv, subdivision and zoning, uh, they're primarily, uh, they staff Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment. They do over 600 agenda items a year. Uh, that doesn't count the number of agenda items that you see on Tuesdays. Uh, they have to process those through the sire system, through Francis. And, um, they, they also, anytime there's a code interpretation, they need, they're the division that you ask for that interpretation. Uh, we also do over 3,000 address assignments or updates a year. I know the, the mayor's talked about the number of people coming in and the number of plats and things that we do. We assign those addresses. We also have, they have to be accurate for the 911 system. So, this, this sec, this division is responsible for that. Okay, now, the major budget changes. I've talked about most of these. I think I forgot the customer service rep. We're gonna add a customer service rep to the, the Development Center. They'll help in the permit licensing section. The code, the, uh, field officer in animal welfare. The budget proposes to delete a code enforcement officer. Basically, we looked at our budget, and we tried to decide where best we can allocate our resources. We feel with, deleting a code enforcement officer has the least impact on the citizens because we, in December, we added four new ones into the field. And, uh, we still don't know what the results of that program's gonna be, but we know it's gonna be positive. So, even deleting an officer here doesn't reduce our services at all. It would only impact maybe on the end of how much improvement we could make. So, we felt comfortable about that. Uh, we deleted the network al, uh, analyst, analyst out of admin. That was a position that didn't have any direct customer service. As I said at the beginning, our, our divi, our department, you know, primarily deals with the public. And we felt that that was a position that we could, a cut we could take without impacting, uh, the pub, our service to the public. And then, here's, um, showing our, we have some capital improvement programs that are ongoing. These are mostly at the animal shelter. You know, I, I stated earlier about the number of people that we get a month at the shelter. So, we, we've got a parking lot expansion proposed. We've, uh, we're proposing to get emergency generators. One thing, when you keep four or 500 animals, you know, if you get a thunderstorm or a snowstorm, and your power's out for any time, if you don't have backup generators, you know, you're kind of in trouble. And so, we've been lucky, you know, the emergency management's always been able to help us out here, but we're going to, uh, set up our own generator system, so we'll be able to run all the time, even if we're without power.
Bob, does this budgeted, um, amount for the air handling system solve the problems over there and reopen that?
Yes. The, uh, those improvements are almost finished. So, we're, we're real close to being able to get back into our, our clinic, and, uh, this should take care of us there.
Thank you.
There are budget summary. This shows the position changes that I talked to, talked about. Basically, there's a, we have 190 now. This budget will still have 190. They're just, our resources are real allocated a little bit. The total budget's 18 million, just over 18 million. And I'm sure I missed something, but, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bob, I'd like to compliment you and your staff, especially in the Construction Inspection Division. It's usually not a fun process to go through to have someone come in and look over your shoulder and, and analyze your processes and procedures. But I think you all responded quite well. And, uh, the bottom line is that we're always trying to improve service to the citizens of Oklahoma City, and I think this is gonna go a long way in that regard. So, thank you. And I also want to thank, uh, Jim Williamson, our city auditor, for his efforts in that regard. I do have a question. In the area of zoning, you know, often, uh, whether it's a developer or an individual who comes before either the Planning Commission or the city council, is represented by attorneys whenever they're requesting a change in zoning. When individuals, say, members of a neighborhood or which are adjacent to the proposed property, they may not have the resources to go out and hire an attorney to represent them. But does your department, uh, open itself up and, and try to advise them, somewhat like a public defender would in a, a trial situation, to allow them to have the understanding? You know, it's, it's one thing to say, "I don't like the, uh, the design of this," or "the color of this," but that may not really have any credibility. Does your department work with individuals who are seeking a, uh, you know, some assistance in that regard that cannot afford legal representation?
Well, we don't really, we're not an advocate for the, for the applicant, but we do walk them through the process, tell them of what have, you know, things that have happened in other cases, show them examples. And we give them as much information as we can, but we're really not in the position to, to advocate for them because we're processing the application. But, but we, our staff's work, most of the staff's been there for several years, and they work really hard to work with those problems.
Well, I'm sorry, I should... We don't advocate for either side, but we do provide information and, and let them know what the regulations are and what the processes are, and hopefully make it so that you can come to the Planning Commission and make your case without the need of outside counsel.
Yes, and that's what I meant to say, more of an education process, so they understand...
Yes.
...what issues are important in making those types of decisions and which ones are, are not as important. And then, finally, in the area of code enforcement, when an, uh, a resident receives a citation, a fine, what happens if they fail to pay that?
Well, the, um, when they receive a, a citation, they can go in and pay $167 at the counter and be done with it. Uh, if, if they fail to, uh, respond to the notice they receive from municipal courts, then the, a warrant would be issued, where they would have to come in and make good on that citation.
Okay, okay. Now, is that different? Because if we read some of the newspaper articles recently about these apartment complex, uh, complexes where there's been, uh, out-of-town owners, but they've had a lot of citations assessed against them, there's, there's a limit as to what we can do, apparently, in that regard. Am I, is it, are those two different things?
Yes, there's...
Okay.
Often, there's a challenge in obtaining criminal jurisdiction over out-of-state landowners. That's a problem.
So, we can assess these citations and fines, but if we can't, I guess, serve them, then...
Right.
We're kind of limited in our effectiveness.
We are limited in our effectiveness in dealing with, particularly with out-of-state owners of property.
Now, that may change if there was ever a change in, uh, at the state level as far as legislation that would allow us to pursue that. Is that correct?
There's a, you still, you're still going to have to get some type of a service on those people and get them within the jurisdiction, at least of the state.
I see.
We have some authority where we can go around to different counties in the state and use the, the sheriff to help us there, if necessary, with, with state resident landowners.
Okay.
But, but residents, say, in California or some other state, it's, it's really a challenge trying to get control over them. Not, you know, if you had, if it has something to do with like the condition of property, we can work that as a unsecured or dilapidated property and potentially just tear the property down. And if you, if you could possibly... And if you, if you could possibly get additional statutory authority for cleaning up property and putting a lien on the property, and we've tried that in the past and have been unsuccessful at the legislature, but those are some of the additional avenues that you could use to try to address those type of properties. And if you, you actually do get the legal authority to put a lien on the property with the county treasurer's office, then that goes through the tax sale process and the ownership of the property will then change hands. So that kind of puts a, that's leverage on the, the owner if they want to keep the property to come in and do something, or at least to pay the cost of the lien after you've done something. So you really need additional statutory authority.
Thank you.
Quick question, uh, Bob. Uh, the fee, the fine is a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, correct, uh, for violation?
If you come in and pay it, that's what you would pay, but if you go to court, it could be up to five hundred.
When was the last time we had an increase, uh, in the fine?
I know that we looked at it four or five years ago and I, but I don't remember when it was increased. Do you remember the last time we increased the fine at municipal court? Uh, no. If you go over a penalty, if you go over a penalty of five hundred dollar fine and anything over a five hundred dollar fine, or if you add imprisonment, and that gives them a right to a jury trial. And that will, that delays the process in court for longer periods of time than if you just issued, uh, daily citations with a possible five hundred dollar fine. So- And, and the one thing about paying that, once they pay for that citation, that's a conviction, so we can go back out the next day and, and if they haven't corrected it, we can give them another ticket because they've admitted that by paying that ticket, that it's a violation.
Yeah, uh, in, in Ward Seven, sometimes we have some developers who, uh, often want to look the other way when it comes to following, uh, PUDs. And I, I do want to, uh, commend your staff for a job well done. I had the opportunity to go out with you and Charles and a couple of other inspectors my first week, uh, here. And we, uh, actually went down several streets to look at some code violations, but also I had the opportunity to, uh, go out, uh, where code enforcement staff actually gave a citation, um, which it was good to see. Um, but the, the issue there was, uh, you had this big developer who, uh, often looks the other way, but I, again, I, I do want to, again, commend, uh, your staff for doing the right thing. What I think when you have a multi-million dollar project, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, uh, a day for violations is simply, oh, I just pay that later and can keep on going. So at, at some point in time, we, we do need to look at how can we hold, uh, those developers accountable, uh, for not following, uh, the rules and regulations because a hundred and sixty-seven dollars is nothing if a project is a multi-million dollar project.
I appreciate the compliment.
Thank you.
Bob, thank you very much. I have one quick question. Your budget this year is eighteen point three million dollars. How does that compare with last year?
We-
I, I, I know it's somewhere in the book-
Sixteen-six, I think.
And that increase is due to what?
Eleven percent.
It's an eleven percent increase. Primarily, it's the chargebacks for IT, uh, and risk management and the, uh, shop. And then there's also a big increase for the capital improvements piece, for the-
That's the big piece. I mean, obviously, there's growth in, it's in all departments, there's growth in personnel costs and, and insurance and such, and there is probably some, some risk management costs associated to it, but they add additional capital in this year's budget.
Good. Thank you very much, Bob. And good presentation. Appreciate that.
Next on our agenda is a presentation.
Next on our agenda is a presentation from the information technology group and-
Shad Meldrum is here this morning, a director of IT.
Good morning. Uh, I'd like to start by, uh, yeah, Shad Meldrum. I'm here to, uh, present the IT budget for this year. I'd like to start by recognizing some staff that's here. Uh, first would be David Grothie. He's the assistant director, new assistant director for this year, but definitely not new to the city, so he's been around for a while. Kerry Wagnon over the public safety systems. Uh, Ralph Gibson over our, uh, infrastructure systems. Uh, Stacy Bone is not here today, but she's over the application systems and all that. And then Felice Ponkill is in our admin department, so she's gonna run the slides for me. Uh, so on page two oh three is the, uh, IT portion of the proposed budget. Uh, next slide. I'd like to start by, uh, in the leading for results program, reading what our department mission is within there. The mission of the information technology department is to provide business solutions and technology services to city departments so they can better serve the Oklahoma City community. So on this, of course, we're internal service department, so we provide technology services to all the other departments so then they can serve the citizens of Oklahoma City. Uh, the picture there shown is the Acela iPad field application, which ties right into development services. That's something we started deploying last year, so they don't have to do a lot of stuff on paper, come back and enter into the system, so they're able to go out with iPads and actually do inspections and, and some of the code stuff in the field. So we're rolling this out more and more, and that's making the departments more efficient. Next slide. Uh, again, on, uh, leading for results program, our strategic issues. Uh, these, we're one, uh, department that in the every other year, uh, review, we reviewed this last fall, so, uh, these are up to date. They haven't changed that much since originally starting the LFR program, but, uh, I'll read them to you. System security and data integrity is something that is the top of our list in making sure that, you know, the systems we maintain are secure. We've got a lot of inter- critical enterprise systems that security's top priority. Uh, meeting growing, growing demand is one that hits us constantly. There's all, constantly new technology out there that departments want to use, new things are wanting to do, so that's a big one for us. Uh, realizing business process improvements is another one that's an issue for our department. That's where, you know, we put in a system and we don't have a whole lot of staff to go back over time and help them use that software more and more efficiently, especially as upgrades come out, there's new, new, uh, enhancements to applications. We, a lot of times, don't have the staff to go back in and help them realize, uh, realize more efficiency with those, uh, enhancements. Uh, future operational funding and resources. Uh, departments are constantly doing capital projects and expanding and, and because we centralized IT in the city, which is a really good thing, a lot of those operational dollars are within the IT budget. So, uh, this actually has been less of an issue for us. We've been getting the operational dollars we need to maintain the technology that's out there. Uh, advanced skill sets, a lot of stuff we do in the city. Uh, like to recognize the staff in the IT department. Uh, they're highly specialized. We have a lot of trouble when we have a vacancy hiring somebody to do some of the specialized things we need done, but we do a lot of training and they are, uh, highly skilled within the department. Uh, the, the graph there shows over the last ten years or so, the growth in the IT budget is we have put in new technology, we have centralized technology and, uh, within the departments, within the IT budget. But the, the point there being, you can see that position-wise, we're basically level from where we were ten years ago. So we're doing more and more and more with the same number of people, with the little dip there being, you know, the twelve positions we, we'd cut when we went through the, the economic downturn. So we're now getting to the point where we're recovering staff-wise and getting back to full staff. Next slide. Uh, this is summary of our proposed operating budget, which is the, uh, IT service fund, which again, you know, goes back and charged back to the other departments. Uh, highlighting there is, uh, Bob was talking about, within our admin represents some departments' chargebacks, that's why that's two point eight million dollars. Uh, customer support, that's kind of the front line for when people call IT to get support. So you can see that's fairly low. We have seven staff members there. Uh, public safety support's a big one, it's about seven million dollars. We have twenty-six people within that. Uh, application support, that's supporting the applications for the departments. We have nineteen staff members there. Enhancements, that's doing new things. That's coding custom applications departments want, where we can't find a commercial off-the-shelf solution, or they want something specialized, or putting in new, new projects, fairly big projects that departments want. Uh, we have about fourteen staff members there. And then the infrastructure, we have twenty-six staff members. We're proposing to add a position there. There's a high priority item within the utilities department to do, uh, some more, uh, monitoring the network and control there, which, uh, we need to do. So we're adding, proposing to add a staff member there. Next slide. Uh, this shows our budget breakdown. This is how the departments are essentially charged back for IT service and how, how all these things, infrastructure, public safety, applications, would go out to all departments. Uh, the big point being here on this slide, if you look at the entire IT budget, about fifty-four percent of our budget is for public safety function. So, so the CCTV systems, uh, all the CAD systems, all that with, is within our operating budget to manage and take care of and, and pay licensing. Uh, beyond that, if you look at utilities, transit, airports and zoo, the, the enterprise-type departments, that's about another quarter of the budget. So the remaining departments, the more general fund departments are getting the last quarter of our, our budget in chargeback. Next slide. Uh, this shows in general our department structure. Uh, so we have, when you talk about LFR and you talk about lines of business, we have five lines of business, uh, which I'll cover on the next couple of slides. What I want to highlight here is within network, within the infrastructure, we are proposing to add one more position there for, uh, network access control. Uh, the other thing being here, an enhancement in LFR we did this last year was to break out the data management program. And as Bob highlighted, they're, they're having trouble with some of their LFR reporting. In the past, we didn't have really staff assigned to help departments with their reporting, health departments with their data analysis. So this is a group now that's broken out to be able to do that function and focus on that for departments. Next slide. Uh, proposed major budget changes in summary, uh, in our budget, that's not shown in the budget book, but about nine, or nine point seven-two percent of our, there's a nine point seven-two percent increase in our operating budget strictly for increased licensing, maintenance and, and such on technology that we maintain. So that's stuff that's out of our control, that's, you know, stuff that, because it was centralized, that's the additional licensing or increase in fees from the vendors of, of software and hardware and all that that we maintain. So that was an increase that hit us. Uh, we are proposing to add the systems support specialists within the network program. And then we are looking for funding for PeopleSoft consultant services. PeopleSoft is one area that we put in years ago, and we've gone through time doing upgrades, but kind of using it the same way we've always used. So this will start to enhance the way we're using PeopleSoft and look at more efficient ways to use that major enterprise software. Next slide. So on our lines of business now, the first one I'll highlight is customer support. They provide service desk and, uh, onsite support and technology training functions. We have about seven and a quarter personnel there. So this is when people need service from the IT department, we tell them to call one number, and this is where they call so that we can get them the, the services efficiently as possible. From the other lines of business, we've transferred as much, as much of the response capabilities we can to this, these guys, so they can do some of the more lower end to be able to get people the service they need as quickly as possible. But in general, they'll take about, projecting out to the end of this year, they'll take about twelve thousand five hundred calls from, from our users, our customers. Uh, they directly support twenty-eight hundred desktops, laptops and network printers. Uh, another thing to highlight there, we do the desktop replacement for most departments except the enterprise departments. They will place two hundred and seventy-five new desktops this year. And that's something in, in the economic downturn, we used to have a vendor that would come and place those desktops. We realized we could do about a thirty percent savings by having our own staff do that. So we've continued placing those desktops, but that's a service, when you look five years in the past, we weren't doing with NIT that we've taken. So, so that's a, a, a good job. Uh, the last one, we've got about a hundred and ten tablet computers out there, so we're hoping to expand that. We, we really think that makes departments much more efficient. This is the pavement management system, this is, you know, all kinds of things, code inspection. So this is working with departments to find ways to do things more efficient with technology. Next line of business is technology application support. Uh, they provide enterprise application support services. We have about nineteen and a half, uh, people within technology application support, but they support about thirty critical city systems. There's a lot of, across departmental systems, but the big one, of course, being PeopleSoft. There's a Cronos timekeeping system and cashiering systems that are used around the city. Those are high sec- security items, high, high availability items we have to maintain. Uh, SAP support for the utilities department. We have service call and work order systems, which are used by development services and, and others to, to perform their business. Uh, permits, code enforcement, fleet and fuel management system, sire agenda management system, which we use every day in here, and document management system. So that's just an example of some of the stuff that this, this group has to maintain. Uh, the, the picture there is, shows, that's an actual iPad with a, a keyboard that we have attached so that field inspectors and, and code inspectors can go out and do stuff much more efficiently, so they can actually see stuff from the system live in the field. They're able to send stuff to them. If there's something they need to go do, they're able to send it to them in the field so they can be much more efficient about, uh, serving the customers, especially in a city at six hundred and twenty square miles and being out and about and, and responding to customer needs. Next line of business is technology enhancements. They provide new technology identification, business analysis, custom application development, data management, project management and implementation services to city departments. Uh, within technology enhancements, we have fourteen people. Uh, some examples of some stuff they do, we continue with the Maps for Kids technology implementation, so we're working with the Maps for Kids office to work with Oklahoma City Public Schools to make sure they get the technology they need as part of that whole program. So that's ongoing, and we have staff assigned that to support that. Uh, our, our development staff has, to date, made forty-seven custom applications, which we continue to maintain. And this is something we don't transfer over to the application support department. This, these guys continue to maintain these. So as we continue not to add more staff here, as they continue to make custom applications, they get more focused on the support side rather than making the new things that some people want. So, so that's a, a big one there. Hundred and forty-seven production databases, which definitely is a lot for the amount of staff we have assigned to maintain that. So, you know, the, all these applications, there are a hundred and forty-seven production databases out there that have to be backed up, maintained, security and all that, so that's a lot. Uh, fifty-two major projects completed since, uh, July first of two thousand and eleven, and thirty-eight major projects are currently active within the department that we're managing. Uh, some examples of custom applications have been developed. Uh, we worked with Public Works to develop a construction tracking application. We looked at commercial off-the-shelf solutions, couldn't find something that met their needs, so we coded something in-house to be able to do their construction tracking and project management. Uh, we're working with finance on the LFR, uh, enhancements, that application. That's how the departments report all their LFR measures. So, so how that gets reported and, or entered and reported is through custom applications the IT department is, uh, developing and enhancing. Uh, the budget submission app, improving the process for how departments submit their budget, track it with LFR measures. We wrote a custom application to finance department's needs on, to get, uh, budget submissions in and make that a much more efficient process. And then the last one is we are working with, uh, and it's highlighted there in that picture, is we're working with the public information and marketing. This is a, this is something we're hoping to come out within the next month or two, and that's a, a data download site. The first thing that'll be in there will be GIS data. We get a lot of requests for GIS data for streets and all that, so this will be an area where citizens can go and at first download GIS data, and then we'll continue to work with departments on other data sets they might want out there that just be exposed and you could search and citizens can download that data. Next line of business. Uh, strategic results, I'd like to highlight here, this is continuing on the LFR. This is really, uh, tied back to our issue statements, the growing demand, which is issue number two. Uh, the increasing gap between available resources and growing demand from both the internal and external sources for technology services could result in, uh, all those, and as Doug said, sometimes it sounds negative, but this, this is some of the things that could happen. Delays in project implementation, increased response time, inability to provide new services, increased security vulnerability, customer dissatisfaction and decentralization of technology services. And really, in, in one way or another, we're seeing each of these issues slowly creep up on us in, in various ways. No- nothing extremely critical at this point, but we're seeing, you know, where departments are wanting to do this and that, we don't have the resources sometimes to, to meet those needs. But, uh, the chart there on the right shows when we do technology projects and we asked whether those customers, those, of those technology projects are satisfied, we get near one hundred percent response. We're doing them, we're successful with technology projects and they're satisfied. Uh, this is from the internal city employee survey that was, that was done recently. Downtime and maintenance, we're getting a ninety-seven percent positive feedback from our users. So we're maintaining the stuff we have in there fairly well. Uh, the one I'd like to highlight there is IT responsiveness. That one is well below target, and that's one that really goes to growing demand. We have departments that want to do stuff and we just don't have the staff to meet their needs as well as they want us to. Eighty-six percent is not bad, but we do have a lot of high priority projects that, that we're just not able to get to at this point. Overall satisfaction, and that was an individual metric in there, was ninety-six percent. So in general, our customer, customers are satisfied with the IT department's service. Uh, to highlight there and follow up, uh, we have an internal tracking system for our projects, running the numbers since July first of two thousand and eleven. This is projects of all sizes. This could be small, medium, large projects, but we completed a hundred and seventy-four technology projects in the last almost two years. In that same time, we had requests for two hundred and forty-five projects. So you can see there's a growing, there's a growing gap in what we're able to get done versus what people are asking for. versus what people are asking for. Next one. Technology infrastructure, they provide security, network, unified communications and client configuration services to city departments. This is a large staff area with 26 and a quarter personnel. Just so you get an idea of what the size of this is, when we talk about our city network, there's 160 different sites around the city that are on our network. And that's one reason we're asking for a network person, because maintaining security across 160 different sites becomes a fairly big challenge. We haven't had staff focused on that. We have network capability out there, but controlling what's out there has been something we've been worried about but not been a priority up to this point. There's about 3,400 voice-over-IP phones. This is where we're placing analog lines with more capability with voice-over-IP phones. But that, of course, adds to our staff's requirements to maintain that, but there's a large number of phones out there. There's 478 servers that are maintained by approximately three or four people. So, this is a lot of servers, production servers. What I'd like to highlight there, and we've been really aggressive about virtualizing our servers, even to the point of our own vendors not being comfortable sometimes with virtualization. A lot of times, our vendors aren't used to working with, with a staff in a city as sophisticated as ours, but we are about 70% virtualized right now. The great thing that gives us is that saves tremendously on server costs. We don't have to have physical servers to support all these 478 servers. So, we're saving a ton of money, capital, but that puts much more pressure on our staff because there's much more, it's much more difficult and complicated to maintain virtualized environments. So, where we trade off saving money and capital, we're putting much more pressure on the staff to maintain that. And this is where we propose to add the one for network infrastructure, which could be a, really, if you look at it, it's a hybrid between a network function providing a security function, but it is within the network area. Highlighting there, and that graph in the lower right is straight from OKC.gov. We worked with finance to get the LFR measures out there where citizens can go and look at the different measures across departments, but that shows our server growth. That shows just last year, we went over 400, and then now, to date, we're at 478. So, we're seeing the servers growing more than our target. So, we're getting to be where we're at a capacity there. Next line of business. The last line of business is public safety support. They provide public safety application systems, communications and facility management for the city. There's 26 personnel assigned with here. Originally, when we set up LFR, this was not broken to its own line of business, but because what they do for the public safety is so critical and so specialized, we broke them into their own line of business. They support 48 public safety applications. And I'd like to highlight there also, this includes the 911 onsite dedicated support and the 911 center. So, the public safety communication center, a couple of blocks over here, the facility, everything in it and all that is maintained by IT, within the IT budget. Calculating that out, that represents about 9.4% of our entire budget is for maintaining the public safety communication center. We have responsibility for maintaining the 181 outdoor storm sirens. There's about 930 mobile data computers within the public safety vehicles and other departments are starting to use those now within their vehicles that we maintain. There's 4,700 radios assigned to city departments that we're maintaining. The picture in the lower right corner of staff, when we talk about technology, sometimes, you know, you think computers and applications and all that, but one reason this area of public safety support is so high number-wise is because we actually do the outfitting of the police vehicles. That's an operation that years ago, we tried to do externally, and there was dissatisfaction with the vendor providing that time-wise and quality. So, we internalized that, and we continue to do that today, even to the point of being approached by some other cities about, can you do our vehicles? But, we do, we put the light bars on, the roll cages in and everything. So, that's done by IT staff for the public safety vehicles. So, that's them configuring the new public, the new police vehicles that came in and figuring out how to fit all this technology within that to the police department's satisfaction. I'd like to highlight too, on the radio system, when we talk about our radio system, it's not just Oklahoma City function, there's other local jurisdictions on our radio system. It's a benefit to them and a benefit to us when we're responding. So, those others that are actually using our radio system are Bethany, Yukon, War Acres, Mustang, Putnam City Schools and Police. There's actually several others that have our radio systems, if they need to check. For example, the press actually has, the press has 36 radios themselves. Piedmont has a radio. El Reno has five radios. So, this is where they can actually communicate with us if they need to, but we do have inter-op capability also. But in total, there's 560 radios that are outside the city that are being used by various others. Next line. And that's it. Any questions?
I do have a question on page 537 of the proposed budget. You talked about building a new central maintenance facility campus. Then, as I look back on page 110 of the city clerk's proposed budget, it talked about establishment of a centralized record facility. Will the facility that you propose on page 537 meet the needs of what the city clerk's offices requesting?
Is that the data center that you're?
Yes. 537.
The data center that we're proposing to build out there is really, right now, our primary, secondary data center are too close together. That'll be strictly for server functions. It won't, we're not building it for the point of storing any documents out there. And it'll have, it'll have no windows, it'll be much more energy efficient. Where right now, we're trying to, we're cooling servers much more than we need to. Modern servers are able to run at much higher temperatures. So, this will be a facility strictly for running servers, much more energy efficient, no windows, tornado rated and all that, and getting it, getting the primary data center away from downtown, which is a vulnerability issue. Right now, our primary, secondary data centers are too close together, which keeps coming up in audits, financial audits and other audits that are coming along. But no, we're not planning on having the documents there.
Thank you.
I was just going to comment that the facility that the clerk's office wants is totally a separate idea altogether, is my understanding. It's a storage facility for records, it's not a data, not a digital facility at all. It's a stored record we already have.
That's correct.
That are crowding us out of the first floor down there.
I was struck by, number one, that 41% of the budget is for police systems. And I guess, a question I would have, earlier, we talked about the positive constructive benefit that audits can have. We talked about how that played a role in construction audits. Last week, we had Gary Jones, the state auditor, produced his audit on the police record system, management system, found no evidence of criminal wrongdoing. But did indicate that now would be the time for our city auditor to maybe, to look at a risk assessment on internal controls and also to look at an audit of this particular contract. And I guess I'd ask, not just for Shad, but anyone, does anyone see a downside to auditing that particular contract in a way, I mean, this technology changes so fast, that's the other thing I'm struck by, and these purchases of technology, which is, can become outdated so quickly, and the radio issue, which seemed to take us by surprise to have so many in storage. Would there be a downside to implementing the state auditor's recommendations and having our city auditor now audit this particular contract, which, again, we're 12 years into, we don't have a police record management system in that 12 years, to try and learn ways we might modify the system to make it more effective?
We don't have a problem with that at all. Obviously, Jim has, the city auditor has an audit plan and follows that and has limited resources, and he does his audit plan based upon a risk assess. When I'm not on the audit, or don't, not a member of the audit committee, but the audit committee, I think, knows how Jim goes about putting his audit plan together and as he goes forward, I'm sure he could take it into consideration as he develops.
Many times, suggestions from the audit committee are included in Jim's work plan, and he'll be developing the upcoming work plan for fiscal year ended June of 2014 over the next few weeks. So, I'm sure he would be happy to look into that and include that if.
Jim, our auditor, our auditor is really good. He's very thorough, he's very professional in his approach. And, again, I think as he goes and develops that plan, he will certainly, because of the state auditor's comments, take that into consideration as he goes forward. But I'm speaking for the auditor, and I shouldn't be doing that.
I'll say the same thing. Jim does an extremely good job, and he's always receptive to listen to ideas and suggestions. He's really an important resource that the city has at its disposal. And anytime there's a concern or question, he's always available to visit and then include that in his overall work plan.
One of the things we have in Oklahoma City, which is not universal, is the auditor is outside of the purview of the city manager's operation. In some council manager formal governments, the auditor actually works for the city manager. And obviously, in Oklahoma City, he doesn't. He works independently, works for the city council.
Just to reiterate what Ed was saying though, just so everybody understands, the city auditor works for us in the city council, correct Jim?
That's correct.
And we direct him to audit, and we approve what plans or what areas he's auditing. And that requires us to then also prioritize, because we also constrict him, if you will, by giving him so much resources. So, if we say, hey, we need you to go over here and audit area A, and he has a full audit plan already in place, then something has to give. And so, it is a give-and-take situation. And we are open, as members of the audit committee, for any council member or anybody in the organization to come and say, hey, we think that this area here should be, should be considered for an audit. And then, an independent audit can be scheduled, so.
And I'm sure that he'll be taking into consideration the comments made by the state auditors as he goes forward.
I, a couple, is this an appropriate time to talk about that radio audit? Is this when we ought to be talking about it, or should we wait till later?
Which, I don't know.
I mean, if it is, I have a couple of comments I want to make about it, but I don't want to make them, it does seem like to me it's Shad's concern.
Items from council's coming up later?
All right. I think that might be, I was just.
Quick question, do we have a long-term plan for his IT?
A long-term plan for IT? As best we can, we produce the five-year forecast items as best we can, but, and, you know, following up, the IT stuff changes so fast. We look out there, we project capital-wise what's coming up, we submit those as five-year forecasts. We have staff put on the books, even non-five-year forecast items, as much as five or six years down the road, capital needs. Within our department, if we think we're going to have capital funding based on past history, we don't specifically submit them as a five-year forecast. We go, here's something that's coming up down the road that we expect. It is a challenge within IT and talking about the auditor. We would welcome anything. We actually, I would say, probably get contacted fairly often by the auditor, wanting to do queries on databases and all that and look at things, and they're contacting our staff who, a lot of times, when we did these large projects, some of the business processes across departments, it's our staff that knows how that works. So, we'll work with them and look for opportunities there, and that's one thing that has been coming from the IT department, is the amount of time they're spending responding to some of the audit stuff, but it's all good. We want it done that way. The other thing we've started to do is to make sure whenever we get into looking at dollars and cents on technology and all that, is start having the finance department involved, because we can run the dollars, go, boy, this makes sense, the IT department, but it sure would be nice if the experts say, yes, this makes sense. But, yeah, long-term is always a challenge. Technology changes so fast, and we're having trouble keeping up. And, you know, when you talk about communications, that is an area where you can make a decision today and start to move, and it takes you six to nine months to get into it. And we've started to say this within the IT department, we can't, we can't have the nine months later go, well, now with this, you should have done this. We're going to have to make a decision, make the best decision at that point and start to move, because we can't keep holding off departments going, oh, we see this thing on the horizon, if you'll just wait for that. So, we have a balance there of doing what's best at that point in time, paying attention to what's coming up and making sure we do it as physically responsible as we can.
Thank you.
That answer your question?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Give me one.
I do. This is an internal service fund, and sometimes there's questions as to how does that work? Because you're paying for it out of the general fund, and are we double counting that a little bit? So, Doug, you or Craig, who one of you talk to us a little bit about how the internal service funds work and how they're counted for?
We've got four internal service funds, IT, risk management, the print shop, and then our fleet services department. And each of those are part of, either an independent department or part of another department. And probably the easiest place to see it, on page 67 of the budget book, we have the expenditure summary, where we go down through each of the major funds and the departments. And we've got internal service fund listed there as, which is all four of those together. And they total about $52 million for the coming fiscal year. And as you say, we don't want to double count those, because those costs are paid for by police and fire and water and airports and all the departments. So, as you work your way down through that page down there, towards the bottom, we have a subtotal for operating funds, and then we do less inter-fund transfers. And there's actually $91 million in total that are transfers. And if you flip back to page 69, we detail what makes up that. And about the fourth or, let's see, fifth one down is various funds to the internal service funds. About $49 million is what's paid from other funds into those departments. The reason we do that is we want those costs to be reflected in the department that's really getting the benefit from that. So, for example, when IT provides service to police, it's not really just computers that they're providing, they're helping provide police service. Or when the fleet services department is repairing the vehicles for the police department, that's really a, it's a cost of doing police work. And so, we want those costs to be reflected in those departments. So, we show it in both places, but we use that transfers category to reduce it, so we're not double counting those expenses. I don't know if that answers the question there?
Just briefly, I want to follow up on that one more time. So, you know, within the IT department, the way we handle our strategic planning process is in July, we meet with each department to look at, and we discuss with them what it is they're needing, what it is they have out there. And they can look as far out as they want, so we get those projects on our books. We practically meet with departments. And then, twice a year within the IT department, in about December, and then here in about July, we have where the staff will go out and do a retreat. We look at all those projects submitted by departments, projects that we think we need to be done, and we review those. And it's really a peer review within the department to look, it doesn't make sense, what are you doing? And so, and believe me, the staff scrutinizes each other pretty well, they get on each other. So, that's how we get all our projects in there and keep looking out five years down the road. So, that's how we, five years or more down the road, that's how we do it. So, we meet with departments at least annually, we're trying to do it twice a year, so we sit down and say, what is hitting you, what changes in your environment that we need to meet technology-wise? That's our strategic planning process within IT.
And next up, it's the police department, Chief City.
Chief City comes up. You know, we're blessed in Oklahoma City with a great police and fire departments that we have here. And one of the reasons it makes them as good or great as they are is because of the leadership that we have in both of them. And we've been very fortunate to have men like Chief City and Chief Barry lead our police department over the last decade or so. Not all cities have the stability and professionalism in that office. And so, I'm just very pleased that we have folks like Chief Bryant and Chief City on our staff.
Thank you very much. Sorry for my voice, I'm on the back end of a cold and drinking some water to keep from being so dry from the antihistamines, but if you'll bear with me. If you, the budget process, our book is page 323 in the budget book. First introduce some of my staff that's here. Lieutenant Dan Stewart, who's new to our planning and research, is operating. You know, our business manager, Renee Suckow, and Captain Don Martin is also in planning and research that have helped work on the project. And my deputy chiefs, two of them anyway, John Scully and Coleman, Johnny Coleman. So, thank you for being here. All right, let's start with our mission statement. The mission of the police department is to provide public safety services that promote a safe environment and lessen the fear of crime to the Oklahoma City community, so they can experience an enhanced quality of life. Our proposed budget this year, it's about 6.5% greater than it was last year. We had about 185 million last year, we're looking at a total of 197. You can see the breakdown of the budget here with administration, investigations, operations and public safety support. The less transfer funds are primarily sales tax adjustments out of the sales tax to the general fund and also 911 transfers in that category. By budget source, you can see that primarily our budget is made up of general fund, 60% of the general fund, police sales tax, which of the general fund, police sales tax, which is our dedicated sales tax for law enforcement. Currently, we're paying 219 officers and 24 civilian positions out of that dedicated tax. If you remember, when that came in, when that was voted in, it was for 200 additional officers, and we actually are carrying 219 out of it to date. Use tax is 8%. Other, which consists of basically court and administrative training funds, capital equipment tax, grant management funds, special purpose funds, and capital improvement projects, is in other. Emergency management, which is our 911 center, and then asset forfeiture makes up 1%. Starting with our issues that we state in LFR, Leading for Results. We've had this issue for quite some time now. It's the demand for police presence and services. The growing demand for police presence and services, coupled with increasing scope and complexity of police investigations, if not adequately addressed, will result in slower response times, increased crime rate, and a reduced percentage of crimes solved, decreased citizen satisfaction with our services, and also decreased traffic enforcement. And then we'll go into some of our strategies for the demand for police presence. We want to continue to use overtime programs to address high-crime areas. I know that we've... I've talked with most of you about it, but a lot of the... Some of our salary savings and some of our vacancies, we're now using those funds, because obviously, we can't get those positions hired for several years. We're using those funds to put officers in the field in high-crime areas, and we think we're going to see some reduction, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the budget. Increased traffic enforcement. We try to do a lot more traffic enforcement with dedicated targeted areas, where we have problems, school zones, those types of things, on our overlap days, where we have most of our officers working. And if we have more than we need, then we'll actually assign them to work traffic specifically for the enforcement of that. Increased personnel and investigations, operations, and community-based programs. That's all about adding police officers and resources. And...
Chief, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Would you mind just clarifying? You made a comment related to using overtime to plug into areas where we perhaps don't have positions filled, and that it's difficult to fill all of those positions. Could you just clarify the training process and why that is complicated?
Well, it takes, you know, our training class is about six months. That classroom is about six months. And then you have another four months after you get out of FTO training, about four months or so before they're actually out on their own. So in reality, you know, it takes almost a year before you can get that officer out in the field on their own, taking those calls. Now, after the class, after six months, they're out working and taking calls, but they're riding with a field training officer. So it's a process. It doesn't happen overnight. And, you know, if, as we've discussed before, part of the problem is, is we didn't have a recruit class for two years when our economy wasn't doing so well, and we did not hire new officers. So we got behind the curve a little bit. We had as many as 118 vacancies at one time. Well, you can't catch up overnight, so it...
But you're running two classes a year now.
Running two classes a year. We can put about 50 in that class, a little over 50. Just for an example, we actually started with 56 in this current class, and we're down to 48. So we lose a few, obviously, for various reasons, and we just expect that.
Great. Thank you.
Big slide. The demand for police presence by 2018, police presence and services will adequately increase, while maintaining the level of core services citywide is evidenced by. And these results are results of surveys. And there were surveys, you know, we've been doing since about 2005 or 2006. And where you see the target, those targets are what we were doing in 2005, when we started the LFR process. And so we've maintained those targets. We don't want to do worse than what we were doing in 2005. And at times, they've slowly dropped, they've gone up and down. But if you see currently, feel safe or visiting downtown, you know, in 2011, it was 43%. We went up a percent in 2012 to 44. But our target is still 55%. Feel safe citywide, we've stayed about. Everybody feels about the same as we did, you know, in 2005, seven or eight years ago. And satisfied or verisied with quality of police services, 70% in '11, 68% in '12. And our target is what we were doing in 2005, which is 72. So we've pretty much maintained that over the years with police services and satisfaction. If you compare those to some of the national levels, overall satisfaction with your police department's a lot higher than it is in most major cities. What you're looking at here is, in our results, it's a percentage of priority-one calls responded within nine minutes and 30 seconds. Again, our target's 90%. It's pretty high. I think that's pretty optimistic. We set that target. When we started LFR, we had a target of about 72%, which is what we were doing at the time, in answering calls in nine minutes and 30 seconds. Now, that nine minutes and 30 seconds includes the time that dispatcher picks up the phone, processes the call, and gets it to the officer. And that usually takes a little over two minutes. So the remainder of that time is the actual time for the officer to respond once he gets the call, which is, you know, right around seven minutes. But we're doing that. We're answering all those calls within that timeframe, no greater than nine minutes and 30 seconds, 70% of the time. We want to try to get that up. We think we can do that by adding resources, according to the study that we did with the consultant. He felt like, and things that he's seen across the country, we should be trying to do 90%. With a city 620 square miles, that's probably pretty challenging for us, regardless of how many officers we have. But I think with the addition of officers, like we've been doing for the last couple of years, or like you're anticipating doing this year, we're going to slowly see that improve. I'm confident. Not confident we can hit 90%, but I think we can get up in the 80s. Investigation clearance rates, persons' crimes, the UCR... To explain the UCR, that's what we file nationally with the FBI. We file it through the state, the state provides that statistic to the FBI, so that all cities are reporting basically on those same crimes. And so when you look at 2011 National UCR, our clearance rate for person crimes, and person crimes include homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. It doesn't include all assaults, but it includes the worst assaults. You know, we work a lot more than 3,700 assaults a year, but these include the aggravated ones, the shootings, the stabbings, the more serious crimes that are committed by assaults. So if you look at the clearance rate for UCR, in those particular areas, we prioritize those areas, because if they're serious offenses to a person, our clearance rate is actually higher than the National UCR was in 2011. 2011's the best we have. They're usually almost a year behind in reporting those UCR nationally. So, but in 2012, our UCR was at 52%. Property crimes, where our less priority is, because of staffing issues that we've had in the past, we've put most of our priorities in person crimes, our clearance rate is only 12% in our UCR, where the national average is 18.6%. Now, the LFR stats that we show, we include all crimes. And a good example is if it's a larceny, if it's a serious larceny over a certain amount, those are larcenies, or crimes that we will actually report in our UCR. But we report petty crimes. So what you're seeing on the right side with LFR is all of our person crimes and all of our property crimes. And if you look at that, we've stayed, our target's 67%, and our actual right now, 67%. So we've pretty much maintained that for our overall crimes against person and property Violent crime. This year, we actually... I know, we meet every other year to go over LFR and make changes, but we felt this year that the violent crime issue from last year, and the continuing trend of violent crime to go up, aggravated assaults, really needed our attention immediately. We wanted to include that in our LFR, so we actually... This is one of the changes in LFR this year, the issue. A continued trend of violent crime and gang activity, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased assaults and homicides. We saw that last year. Increased drive-by shootings, increased abandonment of public services, and a decreased feeling of public safety. The strategies of the strategies that we're doing, obviously, we want to increase police presence and enforcement in strategic areas. And we're doing that, like I said before, using some of the overtime from our salary savings from positions that haven't been filled. We also want to continue our efforts to reduce crime through our community-based programs, and we'll show a few of those here later on in the budget. And continue recruitment and hiring. We got behind the curve. We didn't hire for two years. We're slowly catching up. Right now, we're looking at about 91 vacancies. That includes the 30 officers that you added last year. So normally, we would have 60. You added the officers, that bumps that up to 91. If you add the 40 officers this year, we're going to bump that up even higher. Once this class gets out, if I have 45, that knocks that 91 down to about 45, because we do not include the recruit class in our vacancy count until they actually get out into the field. And a lot of the initiatives, it's not just the overtime. We also, in the summertime, when gang activities pick up, we actually pull a couple officers from each division and put them full-time on a gang initiative to help supplement and support those areas where we have more problems, because those activities do go up in the With our results, by 2014, the police department will reduce the number of aggravated assaults citywide by 5%. That's, for a department, that's quite... It's stepping out there, you know, because there's a lot of things we can affect, but in many cases, you can't completely control it. So, but we're challenging our divisions by using that overtime and using it wisely and trying to address these high-violent crime areas. If you look at the numbers, our actuals last year on aggravated assaults was 30... Almost 3,800. We're trying to get that down below 3,600 for that 5% reduction. For the first two months, and that 499 is only for two months, is 499. The same time last year, we had 539. So that's actually a 7% reduction, and we're going to try to continue that trend and make sure we hit that 5%. By 2014, the police department will reduce the number of drive-by shootings by 25%. Drive-bys went up last year. They were 192 last year. Our most ser... Our worst year was back in 2005, where we had about 260. We reduced that down over the years with some of our initiatives, down to 90, about 96. And they, last year, last couple of years, they'd been creeping back up, and they were 192 last year. Through January through April of this year, we've had 45. That's four months, which would be, put us on target to be less than 144, to actually bring it down to about 130-something, if we can maintain that. So again, summer months are more, are busier, so we'll see a little bit of spike in that, but hopefully, we're going to be able to reduce that, some of the initiatives we're doing and using the overtime that we talked about before. And the next is a chart, and you've seen that earlier this year, when I gave the presentation that coincides with the council's initiatives or priorities. And this is what I've talked about before. This is what I worry about. When we talk about homicides, and everybody was upset about homicides last year, if that keeps up year after year, then I'll be concerned about it. But, and I am concerned, don't get me wrong, it's just that one year's not a trend. This is a trend. 2000 to 2012 is a trend. And obviously, as your aggravated assaults go up, your homicides are going to creep up also. It's because all homicide is, is a serious assault with the worst outcome. So this is concerning. This is what we're trying to reduce by 5%. And I think by adding police officers in the field, and by using the overtime that we're using, I think there's no doubt that we're going to be able to reduce this.
May I ask you a question on this?
Yes, sir.
On this chart? Because it, you know, there's an upward trend, but it's a significant change between 2007 and, say, 2008 or '09. Any thoughts as to what created that increase during that time period?
No, we saw, you know, during that time, we saw a lot of the violent crime go up, period. We saw robbery spike. Now, this is only assaults, but we saw a lot of different, a lot of different crimes in that category go up. But if you look at 2008, 2009, up to 2010, you know, this isn't scientific, but that's when we stopped hiring the officers.
Right.
That's when we stopped our recruit classes. So we weren't putting those officers out in the field. And at some point, you know, as I said, we had about 118 vacancies. And that's going to impact... That's going to... I'm not saying it's a total impact on that, but it is going to impact that.
Right. Thank you.
Chief, it also is exactly the same time we had severe economic problems and other things that might drive crime that we don't have control over.
Right. And that could. I've never really jumped out there and attributed. I don't think social scientists have either attributed a lot of the violent crime due to economic bad times. So I think you see a lot of property crimes and larcenies, and things may go up. But, you know, the problem is, is that bad people do bad things. Good people don't do bad, bad things just because the economic crime, you know, suicides and some of those things may go up. As far as assaulting others during bad economic times, the bad people do bad things no matter what. Good people usually are not bad people, because it's a bad time. So there's things that they may do to survive, like, you know, larceny and those types of things, but...
You know, chief, we put in a hiring freeze at that time. There are other cities that eliminated positions. Did they see the same spike in violent crime that we did?
No. Actually, during the time that we saw an increase, they were, you know, they were still seeing a decrease in violent crime.
So why would you relate it to the reduction enforced?
Well, what I did was, I went back and looked at a lot of the major cities. And even though a lot of those major cities... Now, some of the cities, they made reductions, but didn't actually make those cuts. A lot of the cities put those positions back in, kind of like we did, the same year they made the cut. So a lot of them didn't actually lose a whole lot of officers. They didn't fill vacancies. But if you look at... I went back and had my staff look at peer cities and other cities on hiring. And since about 1995, we hadn't really increased our staffing level significantly at all. A few here and there to address Bricktown and some of the downtown areas. But if you look at all of our other cities, peer cities and some of the other cities, you saw significant increases in police staffing over those years incrementally. So the way I explain it to a lot of people is, is that even though we had a hiring freeze, we were already behind the curve. I mean, we started really being behind the curve back before 2000 on the number of officers we needed to keep pace with what was going on in this community. Where a lot of those other cities, when they were... If they had to cut 100 officers, they were already cutting 100 to maybe 800 they'd added. So, you know, when we cut, you know, it's deep. Or if we even stop hiring, it's deep, because we're behind the curve. They're cutting to already an increased staff they've had over the years to keep up with things. And I think that you just, even though they were making cuts, it didn't impact them as significantly as it had for us, just to not even fill our positions. So it's pretty interesting. There was only one city in that survey that we did that didn't, and that was Wichita. Wichita was the only one that actually had less officers over the last 15 years or so. And so, and I think, you know, that's kind of... Respectfully, that's kind of what we've been saying, is that, you know, you have to... The most important resource is police officers in keeping the crime down. And it's, you know, the best way to do that is try to keep up with that incrementally over the years, rather than getting so far behind and then trying to play catch-up. And I think that, you know... And a lot of departments do it the same way. They wait, and then they add, you know, they'll add 300, 400, 500 officers. But if you look at those cities, I think that explains it to me, because when that issue came up, I wanted to know. Why is it they can make cuts and their crime rates still... Their cuts were pretty minimal compared to the number of officers they'd added over the years. So, and that's pretty... I mean, that's not scientific. I mean, that's just, you know, that just could be one explanation. But most of the studies that you look at now, and you show, it's that if you talk to major city chiefs, and I'm part of that group, you know, you can put all kinds of programs in place, but as far as reducing crime, you've got to have those officers in the field to do that, so...
In those other cities, how do they fund their police program?
Well, they fund a variety of ways, you know? Some of them are sales tax, some of them are... Some of them are sales tax, some of them are, you know, county taxes, property, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways that they're funded. Some have a combination of things. Some have a city income tax. I mean, there's just a variety of ways that they fund those, you know, which is a policy decision, obviously, by council. And, and so, it's hard to say one because they all do it differently. And there's benefits to, benefits and downsides to all of them.
Actually, Bill, that's not a policy decision of council. Those are generally limited by state law as to what we can do in those areas as far as funding for...
Right. Right. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we're limited as to how we, we can support the city, so... Okay, the next issue is advancing technology. Increased use of advanced technology in the commission investigation of crimes, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased time and response requirements for investigations, unsolved crimes, increased crime rate, decreased citizen satisfaction with police services. And our strategies on this, one, a couple of them are increase the number of digital media examinations by 100% to 208 by 2015. And then also, 100% of all DNA cases submitted will be analyzed. The one thing challenging for us with all, with all the, doing all the DNA cases is that we're one of the few cities that have actually trained their police officers to take DNA on property crimes. So, our officers can actually go out and take swabbings and things as evidence. They can do fingerprints, you know, they can also check for fingerprints, but now they can do swabbing and submit those as DNA evidence. So, we have a lot, a lot larger caseload for our kibbist to have to go through now. They don't examine all of them, only the ones they think that they, you know, that, that there may be actually some evidence there, we can identify a suspect. But there's a lot of DNA that we have in our files now, which basically identifies a suspect. We just don't know who that suspect is because we don't have any DNA to match it with. But at some point, if he gets caught on another burglary or we get him arrested or any other crime, we have his DNA, then we can match those up and prove that crime's being committed by them. So, that's, that's why that's pretty significant. And obviously, the digital media is just, is, is, is growing. I mean, our, our, keeping up with staffing to support, because almost all crimes involve some type of digital evidence, almost all, whether it's your telephone, whether it's your laptop, your iPad, it's just, it's just amazing. And, and it's expected in court now. Why didn't you examine their telephone? Or why did, so if you don't do it, it can hurt you in court. So, you know, back in, we went from 200, 415, going back to the DNA, we had a backlog of, of 415. In 2012, we're down to 95 this year. And the reason for that is we, we're paying kibbists overtime on the weekends to come in and try to play catch-up. The reason we got so far behind is we lost several kibbists, and it takes time to get those hired and certified. And until you do that, you're going to create a backlog. So, we've, we've made some strides, strides in doing that.
Chief, we do all of our DNA testing internally?
Yes. We're only, there's two, there's two cities, two departments that have their own DNA labs. Well, there's three. There's the state, that they do for the entire state. Tulsa has one, and we have one. And OSBI doesn't, does not do any of ours or any of Tulsa's. They, they support the rest of the state, the smaller agencies. Okay. Advancing technology. By 2015, increase the number of digital meeting forensic examinations by 100% for a total of 2,008, like I stated before. You know, in 2006, we started with 52 examinations. We doubled that by 2011, so we already, you know, we already reached that 100%, so we changed it to, to increase that by another 100% to 100, it was 104 in 2011, so we're trying to double that to 200, 208. So, that's how we got to that 208 in, oh, in two, in 15. And so, right, for this year, we, we're up to 71. Metal thefts. Still an ongoing problem, still an issue. The, and, and the issue here is that the continuing trend, if not addressed, will result in increased perception of crime, demand for city services and a feeling, you know, decreased feeling in public safety. With the ordinance changes that, that you all made several years ago, and along with us creating a special unit, we think we've made some headways in, in dealing with the metal theft issue, especially with the, the dealers, the individuals, the recyclers that are purchasing metal. So, our strategies is continue to use the metal theft unit to improve tracking. That metal theft unit has been up now full-time for about a year and a half. And, so, we're doing a lot more proactive things in going out and actually checking our recyclers to make sure that they're not, because I know, they've got a pretty good feeling they're purchasing stolen, you know, property or not. They have a good idea. So, the things that were put in place with the ordinance to help make them accountable, I think is having, having some impact. We want to increase the quantity of metal theft investigations that we present for prosecution, and we want to coordinate with those recyclers, like I was saying before, to apply, to be applicable with the law. And if you look at, if you look at all of our, our results here, everything's pretty much in line with what we're wanting to try to do. Suspects' arrests were 64 in 12. They're 55 now, so we'll be over 64. Charges are already at 91, so by the time that, that fiscal year gets here, we'll be well over 96. Our compliance checks is the most significant change since we have had the unit in full-time. You know, we had one in, in 12 because we essentially didn't have a unit. We had one person that did it part-time. And now we have two, so we have 132 checks on our recyclers that we do, which, which keeps them on their toes and hopefully makes them comply more with the law.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Just because this continues to be so common in neighborhood association meetings and just, can you remind me what, we're at the recycling units, if someone comes in, what, is there video of everyone who comes in and presents copper?
They have to take it, they have to take a, the, the ordinance and state law requires them to take a picture of their driver's license and have a driver's license and ID and take a picture, not only of the driver's license, but of them. Not video, but of them. They have to have the equipment to do that. Also, a picture of the tag on the vehicle that's brought it in. And so, there's, there's other requirements. There's actually a no-buy list, that, things they can't purchase, you know, unless they're a licensed dealer. For instance, Joe Blow can't just come in and sell a catalytic converter, you know, that's been cut off a car. A car dealer or salvage dealer who has a license to do that can. But they've got to show they have a license and they have to, now, everybody has to sign an affidavit to show that this was not stolen, so then you have another charge on them to hold them accountable where they did actually sell that property as, as not stolen property. And there's some other things. It's a pretty long list of requirements, but there's, there's a lot. They have to keep a list. They have to allow police officers to come in, police to come in and check that list, come in and check their property. They have to be able, they have to hold property, certain types of copper and things for a certain amount of time. If we go in and we say, "I want to, I want to see this, it was sold on this date," and they don't have it, then they can be cited. Because they have to hold that property for a certain period of time for us to be able to try to identify if it was stolen or not. So, there's some, there's some, there's some things there. There's some other things that the metal, metal assoc, the, the Recyclers Association of the state of Oklahoma have tried to make some more changes this session. I think a lot of them died. I don't think, I don't think they got, they got through as far as licensing, you know, sellers and those types of things. But there are some other things that actually recyclers themselves are trying to push to make it a lot tougher and help reduce those thefts. Part of the problem is, is that, you know, you can, you can, Oklahoma City may have an ordinance and the state has it, but the city has to, you know, kind of adopt that as an ordinance to be able to address it on, at the local level. And a lot of cities don't do that. And there's some surrounding states that don't. So, you can steal the property here and drive down to Texas or drive someplace else that may not have that requirement and sell that property there, you know. So, if that, if that grows, as it grows, and you get more laws put in place by the states, then it makes it much more difficult for them to... But it, what it has done, I think, is reduce the mom, pop, fly-by-night recyclers, the ones that come in from out of state, set up shop for the weekend, put an ad in the paper. It's like, "I haven't seen one of those in a long time," and say, "We buy catalytic converters, we buy these." Well, then all of a sudden, we have a rash of thefts in catalytic converters because some guy's in here for the weekend purchasing them, and then he takes them to wherever out of state and sells them. So, the laws have definitely affected that. Okay. Budget changes for '14. One thing that's, we, we tried this year was, it was taking, it was, it was taking an average of 41 minutes to book a prisoner into the county jail. Sometimes it was taken on the weekends, two hours, two and a half hours, which takes an officer off the street for a significant amount of time. So, we worked with the county that we funded some additional personnel to actually receive the, receive our prisoner at the county jail and do the whole booking process. The county would do it. We'd fill out a certain amount of paperwork. We still have to, they still have to make their reports, but they don't have to wait in line to get them booked through that window. So, what it actually, what it actually did, the pilot program that we ran, reduced the booking time from 41 minutes to 18 minutes. We estimated annual savings of 9,400 officer hours, which means those are 9,400 hours that they're back out on the street, not sitting in the jail trying to book somebody. So, we feel like that was a huge success, and we're, what we're, we're planning on doing is rolling that contract, so it'll take us about $150,000 a year, but we think that's beneficial to us. And roll that into the jail contract so that we can continue that program. And the officers are real happy. They don't want to sit in the jail. They want to be out on the street, yes.
Chief, a suspect who's apprehended in Canadian County, does, gets booked in the Canadian County jail system?
No, they're booked in Oklahoma City County, Oklahoma County.
So, we bring them down here, so that the same time savings are involved?
All prisoners, all, yeah, all prisoners that are in, arrested in Oklahoma City go to Oklahoma County. And it's responsibility of Oklahoma County and Canadian County to transfer that prisoner to Canadian County. And then we have the Abastor Program. Abastor Program itself's a little over $300,000. I mean, all of this, it's been a great program. Chief Berry put that in place when he was, he was chief. It's been a really successful program. You see them downtown. It was always funded out of, out of our justice assistant grants. It's when we started it as a pilot program, it was continued to be funded. Last year, the city took over half of it, and this year, we're going to put the other half in the general fund because it, it should be paid for out of that versus a grant that was there just to support it as a pilot program. So, that's what, that's the other half, other half of the $300,000 that it takes to fund that program.
Chief, can I, while we're on the jail, can I just ask you? We're getting very close to when media reports indicate that the county is moving towards perhaps a sales tax to address their jail issue. And that, I mean, we'll have to see what the DOJ says and what the actual proposal is, but things floated would be building a new jail, perhaps as far as 10 miles outside of downtown, maybe having a half-cent sales tax for 10 years. Some of that might be permanent for personnel, for police force. How, can you talk about what that would do to officer hours? What would be your opinion about a, a new jail 5, 10 miles outside of downtown?
I wouldn't, I don't support that. I mean, I've been pretty open about that. And when they talked about doing that several years ago, and they had a, had a plan put together to do that, having it centrally located in downtown where it is, is extremely valuable us logistically. I mean, I can just give you an example. We put somebody in jail, the officer, that's just one, that's one part of the process. The next process is for an investigator to investigate that case. And in most cases, that, that takes, they have to go over and interview that, that person that's put in jail. Right now, they walk across the street. So, that, it doesn't take much time to walk across the street, pull a guy out and interview him on a, on a case so that they can file those charges. Because that has to be done. You know, if you put it 5 to 10 miles out now, that changes that whole process. That's more time-consuming. We, you know, we have to, we have to actually travel from headquarters to that, to that location. The, the other side of that is, is a, a big, a big chunk of those, a big, a big majority of those have municipal charges on them. Well, our municipal court's right across the street. Now, you've got to figure out a way to transport, if it's that far away, transport your municipal prisoners 10 miles away or 5 miles away to the municipal courts. And that's a daily, ongoing, both of these are daily, ongoing processes. So, all of a sudden, you've added a lot of time and expense for, for the city to just not only interview the prisoners that are in there, but then get them to court. You can do some stuff over video that they do now, but a lot of it has to be in court. You know, all you have to do is walk them across the street, take them to court to deal with those types of things. That, logistically, for officers, bringing somebody in, it's centrally located, downtown centrally located. If they also need to book evidence and do things for us on a case, that allows them to be in close proximity so they're not having to, to go out here 10 miles away. It may be convenient for somebody who works that district or further south if we're south, but it makes it less convenient for a person that works in northwest or far northeast having to travel further to book that prisoner and then also have to take that property, then come back down here and book the property here. Having that all in a central campus is much more beneficial logistically to everybody, both officers in the field transporting and both for investigations and for courts. The other side of that is, is that, and we've talked about it, David Prater and I, District Attorney, have talked about it. He's totally against that also because having it close to the county courts is much more convenient, much more beneficial to transport because those prisoners have to also be transported to District Court for felony charges. So, I mean, you know, he's, the sheriff's aware that I have, I oppose that. I do not like that at all. I don't think it's needed. I do think that changes need to be made to the jail. There's some physical changes, modifications that can be made to that jail to meet some of the, some of the issues that the Department of Justice have raised. But most of those issues that the Department of Justice raised were, were policy and procedures organizationally. They weren't physical, physical problems. But those, there are some issues that need to be, there does, needs to be some remodeling, but there's really no reason that, that all that can't be done on that campus along with some new facilities to support that and remain centralized for everybody, you know. And, and the way I put it, and I've always put it, is that we're, we're the biggest client. I remember when the county jail was built, it was, it was touted, what it was voted on is a city-county project. And we had a lot of say in that. We had a lot of discussion, a lot of input. We've had very little, and at least from my side, have had very little involved in that, in that jail. But when, several years ago, I did, I, I made a lot of the meetings and opposed, opposed that. And I think the District Attorney is also on board with that. So, that answers your question. Okay. Program improvements. The proposal this year is to add 37 officers and three lieutenants for a total of 40. Those positions will go to the Saturday/Saturday overlap that, that we have now agreed on with the Internal Order of Police. This will obviously help us, the staffing will help us address the violent crime. A lot of these positions will be able to put in some of those areas, or specific areas where we're experiencing the violent crime. That's a, that's, the dollar amount is about 2.8. The 2009 AR, a COPS grant, three years ago, we, we had seven officers. We accepted a COPS grant, and we had seven officer positions in truancy in our FAC program, two, two in our FAC. And I believe there was one lieutenant and four officers for the truancy program that, that all the data that we have every year, just seems to be a wonderful program. We've helped reduce some of the, the truancy rates in the schools for a lot of those kids. We've definitely reduced the number of parents that have, have gone to District Court over a number of absences because we're catching the problem earlier and we're getting those kids, getting, making them accountable prior to it getting so bad that they can't even, they missed a whole semester or missed a year. So, I think that's, it's been a good program. The requirements on that grant was that the city pick up the last fourth year, which is what, what you're seeing here. That's the dollar amount to pick up the fourth year on that. And then after that, a decision will have to be made to continue that program. The, the timeline, just so you know, if, for the, for the additional officers, if the 40 officers are added this year, you're looking at a total of 70 officers for that Saturday to Saturday because the positions that you're actually adding will go to that Saturday/Saturday overlap. A total full staff will be 72 officers, so we'll be a couple officers short, but we're still, we're still a ways out of being able to get those officers hired. Now, in the agreement that we made, we'll start, start actually putting the Saturday/Saturday overlap together, probably start with two divisions with Class 132, which would be about November of 2000. November of two thousand and fourteen is when we'd actually get those officers assigned to that Saturday-Saturday overlap. And we'd probably start with two divisions because that's probably won't have enough to do all four divisions at the at the same time. And then in Class 133 is when you'll start. If you add the forty positions positions this budget, this next budget year, then the class right after that, you will actually see the remainder of the thirty officers that you you had you gave us last year along with a number, a certain amount of this year, forty. It won't be the whole forty, but it will be a certain amount will also be in that next class, and then we'd be looking having having them out on the street by July of two thousand and fifteen. Because again, it just it doesn't happen overnight because we're still trying to also fill vacancies and making up for what we didn't have previously.
Chief, your your current overlaps, just so people understand and clarify, the current overlaps are Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday. So those are the times that we have the most officers on the street are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
Correct.
So this move to a Saturday overlap, which is new, will allow us to start putting more officers on the street on Saturdays.
Right. Our the majority of our crimes, a majority of our serious crimes occur on Friday and Saturday. So the idea in what the staffing study basically said is that you need you need most of your officers, you know, the peak times you need the officers out there are going to be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
So this is kind of the first move we see
Yes.
to getting more officers on the street during those peak
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So and as we continue to add officers, the idea would would be to try to create that Friday overlap, and we've had some informal discussions with the President of the FOP, so I don't I don't I don't see any issues and problems with that.
Quick question, Chief, in regards to the two thousand and nine A R A COPS grant. What ways are you all working to try to sustain the program after this fiscal year?
Well, the only way to sustain the program is to have the the dollars to fund them. It's all positions. So and and I assume if they're able to find the dollars this year, that those same dollars that are being dedicated to that will probably be included in the budget for next year as long as we want to retain those positions.
What we're doing is moving it off the federal grants and into the general fund.
Right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, the FACT program, Family Awareness and Community Teamwork, you know, this is a program, this is one of our proactive community programs. Part of it was paid for by the COPS grant. Two positions were paid with with the COPS grant. And so we have a total of four officers, but we have a number of volunteers. We have a number of partnerships, partnerships like Chesapeake, Sand Ridge, UCO, Metro Tech, The Thunder, Arts Council, Health Science Center, OSU Stillwater, or just to mention a few of the partnerships that have have been involved with supporting the FACT program. We also have a hundred and seventy-five volunteers and we actually have two hundred volunteers this in two thousand and twelve. So, you know, it's 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 one of those issues that we're trying to directly impact some of these kids from becoming in gangs or getting out of gangs, and I'm going to play a video that explains it a lot better than me.
Gang prevention program ran by the Oklahoma City Police Department. So you have family awareness. So we want to make families aware about what gangs are doing and the signs of gang activity and the dangers of gangs, awareness in community, and then teamwork. So it's all work together to combat the one simple problem that we have in in the city, which is gang violence.
Gangs you're surrounded by, you walk to the store, you go to the park, all you see is gangs, people getting quoted on, that's makes it feel like that's what's next for you.
Basically, our program is more focused on intervention instead of investigating crimes. So what we do is we get referrals from teachers, other police officers, people in the community, and they just come in contact with kids who otherwise would fail.
I probably started getting closer and closer to getting quoted by the time I was ten. I actually got quoted when I was eleven. As soon as I got quoted, I was turned on to everything it was about. I was exposed to it. I was getting shot at. I was going to jail. I was, you know, there was a lot going on, and it was crazy, like an eleven-year-old going through all that.
If they didn't have some kind of positive caring adult in their life, maybe an officer stops a car full of gang bangers and they run everybody, and it's one kid in the backseat that just seems out of place. They'll refer that kid to us.
He was pretty much out of control. He was not coming in in curfew. He was messing up in school. He had become what would be considered an active gang member.
Like the world I was going down, it could have really, it really could have went all bad for me. I don't think I don't think in my mind, I didn't realize it.
And we'll sit down and let them know, hey, we've noticed this happening. We've noted the change in the behavior. We know that based on what we're seeing, these consequences are going to happen to you sooner or later, and we don't want that to happen. We also look for their potential. What are they good at? What do they want to be? What are their dreams? What are their goals? If they don't have any, why not? The things that we've seen in the beginning in this intervention, the reason we come here is because you're at risk of not reaching your potential.
It helped him become a more responsible child, a more responsible student.
FACT, it's family to me. That's how I see it. It's just a place, it's my home. I come here to chill anytime I want to. If I got a problem, call Q.
His whole approach to life improved through what I felt was this program.
I mean, a lot of our kids when they come into the program, they don't have anybody who cares about them. I mean, that's how they feel. They feel like it's me against the world kind of type deal. So we let them know that they're not perfect, they're going to make mistakes, but we're on their side, and we want to help them overcome those obstacles and become better people.
They stopped locking up people like me to help people like me. So that's a big step.
This is a wonderful program to support. This is a wonderful program to come out and volunteer with, and by all means, we need to come together as a community to continue to support this program so that they can go out into the community and support the children.
The mother, you talked to officers that had arrested that mother's child numerous times, said he would be dead right now if he hadn't been in the program. That's he was that it was that serious with him. So it's one success story that that's obviously, FACT contributed to changing that young man's life. Police Athletic League, another one of our prevention programs, is staffed with one lieutenant, four officers, and three non-sworn. The biggest part of that, the biggest part of that is the hundred and two, hundred and thirty-two registered volunteers that that spend hours with that program with working with kids. They're doing a lot in the schools now. They've 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 actually touched last year, three thousand five hundred kids. They're doing programs in the schools. They're doing after-school mentoring programs on South Robinson and down in that Rotary Park where they've they've got teachers coming in to help with kids that are struggling in schools. It's primarily to to create athletic opportunities, programs for them that inner-city kids could normally afford and be a part of. We've partnered recently with the Boys and Girls Clubs to use our our park in South Oklahoma City, that Rotary Park that we they worked, you know, for years on and tried to improve into soccer fields, and now Boys and Girls Clubs along with some other organizations and in the Police Athletic League are working together to put on those soccer programs. Boys and Girls Club Soccer Program was pretty much dead because they didn't have a place to do it, couldn't afford it, and it was ideal for us to partner with them. So it's worked out pretty well. Some of our partnerships, supporters within the community are Sand Ridge, Tyler Media, The Thunder again, the Barons Hockey Team, McLaughlin Family Foundation, Oklahoma City Charity Fight Night, Target, Bricktown Rotary, Oklahoma Heritage Association, Be Okay, and Oklahoma City Schools. So it's just it continues to grow. It's probably one of the one of the better Police Athletic League programs in the country if you if you look at it. But again, you have so many volunteers that are willing to work with with the officers that you can't the dollars, if you were to put that in in the dollar figures and the amount of manpower and hours is just is would be tremendous. New Victims Assistance Program that we started as a pilot program last year, it's 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 amazed me, and it's primarily because of the person we hired, Kim Garrett. She just received the Governor's Award for this program. We started it with with the Voca Grants as a pilot program and hired hired her, and as you can see here, crime victims served, just women last year, thirteen hundred and ninety. Community services referred, over thirty-six hundred, or almost thirty-seven hundred services provided or things. Her job is to is if you have a victim, what's that need? Is it is it securing the door? Is it is a is elderly that can't afford to get her window fixed because she got broken into? Is it is it somebody that's identities, you know, has suffered identity theft? Where can we get the resources to help support them if they don't know where to go? You know, we don't provide all those resources. We we know where the resources are and and use those resources to help support our program. Things like crisis intervention, we do our own follow-ups, criminal justice support, assistance for victims from other agencies like I was talking about, crime victim compensation assistance, we get some of that through the District Attorney's Office, and and just providing any type of information they may need to, you know, to help them after they've been victimized. A lot of people don't know where to go and what to turn to. There's a number of number of associations that we that we take advantage of, you know, the DA's Office, Good Samaritan's, Homicide Support Group, Compassionate Friends, YWCA, Attorney General's Office, Calm Waters, Red Rock, so on and so on. All these all these agencies that are available, we help coordinate to tailor to what their needs are, and and Kim Garrett has done a tremendous, tremendous job. I just have to give her all the credit. She's way beyond what we ever thought, and then last year in the budget, we actually put her in as a full-time employee because the program is so successful. Now hers is separate from our domestic. We have a person that's full-time, domestic violence with our contract with the YWCA. She does not handle domestic violence. If she has that, she refers them to our domestic violence coordinator that work is in our office and works hand in hand with our investigators, the YWCA, the shelter. This year, we we became accredited for the third time. Accreditation happens every three years. We went through the process again this year. You know, it was established to 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 create best practices in law enforcement. I can tell you right now, after doing this nine years ago, we're a better law enforcement agency because of doing it. It took us about two, two to three years. It actually started when Chief Berry was there, and I I had the opportunity to finish it up, and it it was a process of getting to the point where we could adhere to all of the four hundred and forty-two standards, and we're only fourteen of thirty-four police departments with a population over five hundred thousand that are accredited in the United States. And part of that is because that four hundred and forty-two standards is just very difficult to do, but I'm very proud to say that we do do that, and now we were accredited for the third time. This is our ninth, our ninth year. So we're pretty proud of that.
We really need to stop and highlight that for a second. If you think about that, of all the the major police departments out there with all the resources they have, and only fourteen of those top thirty-four fall in this category, I really, I mean, that's really a big deal. I really do give the chief and his
Staff.
staff a great kudos for for doing that. That's that's really a big deal.
And it's a it's a process that, you know, you really have to promote throughout the whole police department because when they come in, they don't just talk to me. They don't trust me completely. They want to go out and they'll hit an officer cold on the street and say, okay, policy so and so and so and so, what do you do on that? And that officer says, well, here's what we do. This is what we're supposed to be doing. It's just like wearing vests. They require that you wear reflective vests. We didn't do that before for officers working the street. It's a good idea. It's safer because they can be seen. Well, they want to go out, talk to the officer and say, where's your vest? Pop the trunk, there's his vest, and he uses it on traffic. So they don't just take our word for it, the fact that it's written. They actually go out in the field and they they want to see, they want to so, and we've we've done very, very well over the last three years, and the staff has worked very, very hard in in doing that. Pretty proud of it. The new police headquarters building, construction should begin in October of thirteen. That's that's the what it's going to look like. Completion should be in fall of two thousand and fifteen. They said it'll take anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months. ADG has been wonderful to work with. They've done a great job in working through a lot of the the process. It's been a new experience for me, so it's at first, it was a lot of fun and interesting, and and after a lot of a lot of work, it's we're ready for it to start. It's approximately eighty-seven thousand square feet, and we're looking forward to that project getting started. The the next the next one is the new Southwest Briefing Station. Construction should begin in May of thirteen. It's at Southwest Fifty-Fourth in Portland, and the completion date should be around June two thousand and fourteen. You know, future plans at some point is to put our air support out there. It's on it's on airport property that we're getting, we're surrounded by private property now there at the old airport property, airport strip. So at some point, we're going to have to move out out of that, and it's going to be pretty ideal for us to have a combination of our station and staff there at Will Rogers Airport. So when we we do build that, we will actually redistrict, we'll move, we'll actually move some people around and probably restaff some of our areas where, you know, we really where we feel like we have the majority of calls and things like that, we're really going to look at that seriously, especially with adding police officers. But again, Will Rogers, we will probably convert into additional fleet space or some something like that. We have we have the need for that space, so we will actually use the building. And I think that wraps it up. Are there any further questions?
Pete?
One of the things that I that that happens every time I go to a neighborhood meeting, especially in the older neighborhoods, people have a concern about safety. They're concerned about we when you were talking about the violent crime stuff, one of the things you talked about, if we don't control that violent crime, one of the things that's going to happen is that there's going to be a decreased feeling of of safety, and I think that's already happening. I mean, I'm not sure how closely related it is to violent crime, but I think as Counselman Shadid pointed out, it may be more related to the things that happen right inside their neighborhood, like somebody's air conditioner gets stolen, that that kind of thing. If there was, and I think we've added officers, which I is my opinion, based on what you've said over the last couple of years, that's the number one way to solve this, is put more bodies on the street, and I think we're doing all we can. I I based on what you've told me, you can't handle more than two classes a year. We're doing two classes this year. We did two last year.
Right.
But if you had one other thing, what would you add? What else would you do? Because I I get, I mean, it is a constant question at neighborhood meetings of of what I I don't feel safe in my home. I mean, some people don't articulate it quite that way, but but you you get that feeling, especially in neighborhoods where you have a lot of older residents.
I think some of the things that I would suggest, I don't want to talk about, I get I get I get in trouble every time I talk about any type of gun gun issues. So, you know, that's that's one thing, some of those laws.
Yeah, we can't do
But we can't, we don't have any over that. But I mean, if you're talking about some of those things, but you know, we're 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 looking at at trying to work more closely and do a program, working more closely with our gang units, with probation and parole, and with the state, and trying to really address those, because a lot of people come out and reoffend. And so we're going to we're going to try to do some of the things. We went, we actually, our staff went to to New York City, I can't remember the name of the Jase College in New York City, and talked to one of the experts that has has really, his name's Dr. Kennedy, who has has built programs around reducing violence in a lot of other cities. I think a lot of the the things that they do are good that I'd like to adopt, and one of those is working more closely with the state probation and parole and trying to identify those people and watching those people and putting them on notice because a lot of them reoffend, and a lot of them, a lot of the older ones, especially in the gang community, that are generational offenders come out and and encourage, you know, that violence. So I think there's some things we're looking at trying to do and implement this summer that really doesn't, it won't take any other additional dollars. It just is a is a different process of working with some of the other agencies.
Well, I noticed when you were talking, you there, I noticed a degree of kind of enthusiasm for some of the the programs like PAL and some of those programs. Would put more money into those programs?
Yeah, and but I think I think, yes, I'd say yes. I think I, you know, the part of the problem with with our inner-city youth is just having something to do that's healthy. I mean, it's not, that's not rocket science. It's been said for a long time, and and the it's a lot of the inner-city kids are starving for those types of activities, and not all of them play sports, you know. There's other things that they may want to do, and those activities need to be provided. But the schools, you know, you know, I can remember when I was a, I always say, when I was a kid growing up in elementary schools, elementary schools had baseball teams, and we we played other baseball teams, and parents came, and it was all, you don't have that anymore. You don't have, you know, those sponsored activities that didn't cost very much but provided a really healthy activity for kids, and those kids are starving for that, and just to to be something to build their confidence and to be around. confidence and to be around positive peers is the biggest thing. So, they're not migrating to gangs and those types of things. And that, and it's, you know, that's difficult to do because most of these kids are, a lot of the intercity kids are, are living in lower economic, you know, neighborhoods and maybe have a single parent and don't have as much support. Uh, and it almost, you know, it's, it's almost incumbent upon us anymore to try to provide that support that used to be provided by parents because I don't, I don't think you can change that. So, um, you know, I, I think, I think having intercity, those intercity programs and being a, but a lot of that is it just, shouldn't be the burden of the municipality. It should be, you know, there's, there's a lot of people out there that want to, to partner and fund those types of activities when it comes to kids. And the, the reason PAL's so successful is a lot of those companies and things like partnering with the police department because we're stable, we're, we're a stable entity. We're a trustworthy entity. We're going to be here from, for years and years to come and it, it provides some credibility for some of those programs and I think that's what, what's happened to PAL because it's, it's been very successful.
As I see you, this, this time in, in the budget sessions, you, you have everybody around this horseshoe focused on adding police officers and I think probably to a person around this horseshoe, we're all committed that this aspect of public safety is probably the most important thing we have going on right now. And I think if you've got another idea, now's the time to talk about it. The winds change occasionally and
Right.
But I, I think this is an opportunity to try to face it because all of us, I think, as we go out to neighborhoods are faced with those kind of questions that we don't have really good answers for.
Right. Well, and there's, there's opportunities. I mean, you, if, you know, with the maps, you're building, you're building, uh, gymnasiums for all the elementary schools. Good opportunity for after-school programs and it, and, you know, we've talked about, at least through the Police Athletic League to, to help partner because the schools right now, we're going into a lot of the schools and doing athletic programs. They want us in there to provide that and there's some,
Mr. Jim's being busy.
There's some opportunities there for after, it's after-school programs. You've got, you've got them while they're in school. It's when they leave that, when they leave that classroom, do they have something that's going to be?
Has any thought been given to a partnership with, um, with the counties, like with the county sheriff in Cleveland County, Oklahoma County, Canadian County to, uh, to take, take some of the burden of the, uh, the, the criminal investigation piece? It's always, I've always thought that if there was a way that you could, uh, it, it's really important in my area because it's so spread out to have an officer come to a, uh, a, a home burglary or that happened during the day and the people get home and find it, uh, they're very upset when it takes three or four hours or, or two days for somebody to come look at it. I recognize that you can't take an officer off duty to do that because the crime's already committed, that very little can be done about it. But, and has there been any thought given to forming some kind of alliance with the various county sheriff's offices that maybe get the deputies off the motorcycles, give them tickets and, and actually doing something to fight crime?
Well, I mean, the sheriff's office used to have their own investigative unit, but, you know, if it's in Oklahoma City jurisdiction, it's probably better for us to be able to investigate that, carry it through and file those charges. I mean, part of our reporting of crime is what occurs in Oklahoma City. Uh, part of that too is having some consistency in those investigations and having control over it and accountability of those investigations where, you know, as a major police department, I don't have control over that. I don't have control over the training of, of the county officers. I don't have control over, you know, what they do and don't do and
Couldn't that be solved with an inter-local agreement of some kind?
Pardon?
Couldn't that be solved with some kind of an inter-local agreement that would, uh?
We, yeah, they've had, we've had task force before. I mean, I, you can tell you right now, the gang task force that we used to have in the street used to be comprised of county and Oklahoma City. Uh, and we've had those before. You know, the commit program, uh, the commit program now, the, the highway interdiction program, uh, for, for drugs and traffic and all of that is a, is a, is it, right now is a joint county Oklahoma City program. So, there are things that you can partner with, uh, but it, again, you know, there's some things that probably it would be beneficial and some things it probably wouldn't.
It, it just, I know from personal experience that the investigation that occurs a couple of days after the, the break-in is a dusting for fingerprints, just taking, trying to figure out what time it probably happened and what, and taking the list of what happened. It doesn't seem like to me, I understand why you don't want an officer in, in my area. We've got one and he's crawling all these square miles. I, I, I understand that's not the highest and best use of his time, but from the public's perception standpoint, it's a very high use of his time.
Right.
Because they see an officer, they see somebody that's concerned about their problem. I can tell them when I'm in a neighborhood meeting, well, they have higher priority things to do. That doesn't really cut it much, I can tell you. And I believe it, I believe it, but I just think we've got to find some way to, and if that, if that car, for instance, that comes is a county sheriff's car, that's, that's a, that goes along with the idea of the take-home car program. There's a presence involved in seeing a police officer there if it's at five-thirty in the evening or whenever it is. That's a, that's a value to that in terms of the public's perception of, of their own safety. And I just like, I, I, you're, you're the expert, but it seems to me that
Yeah.
There are things that could be done to better utilize the, the, the resources that are out there and many of those resources appear to me to be county resources at this point.
Well, the county doesn't really have a whole lot of resources, for one thing. I mean, it's, and hope, and you said two day, hopefully if it's two days, I need to know about it because we ought to be, we, we get there quicker than two days, but, but
Well, it's been a long time since I've broken in.
I know. So, uh, yeah, I mean, two, well, you know, maybe two hours, but I doubt that'll be two, but
But even if it's two hours, if it's ten minutes,
Right.
If it's, if the crime has already passed, I understand why that's going to rank way down the list of things that they ought to be doing. Somebody ought to.
Well, with that, with adding the
Yes, if I may, that, uh, Hefner Division has a community relations officer who's outstanding. And, uh, in a lot of cases, when I answer the question, the citizens said, oh-huh, it's a politician up there. But a police officer standing up there in, in uniform answering these kind of questions is, 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 makes a tremendous difference in, in the reception by the, the neighborhood association.
I think that's right, uh, except that when it happens to you, that you're going to forget that.
Well, I think adding
I think that's true. I've done that too.
I mean, adding the officers and getting to a point where we can add the officers, you know, I mean, the, the, the stuff we've come up with and I've talked, I talked to the city manager yesterday, uh, that number of two hundred and sixty-eight, based on basically recalculating and updating all the information from, from the staffing study. Uh, and that two hundred, two hundred and sixty-eight recommendation, uh, is, would be less, minus the, say, the seventy you've added over the last two years. So, you're, you're looking at about, you know, a little less than two hundred because you've already added that. If you get those, if you get those positions and more officers on the street, you're going to see a reduction in those response times. You know, we look at, we look at violent crime as our priority in responding to it within nine minutes and thirty seconds, but if you're doing better responding to those and having more officers on the street, you know, you will also increase your response times to those areas. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, you know, what that would be, you know, I can't completely say, but it would be better. Plus, you're also going to see, well, six hundred and twenty square miles, you do need, you need that visibility, but any one day, the county only has about eighty-nine, eight or nine officers driving around in cars on the street. That's, that's not very many. So, you know, as far as, as having, having county, it, we do, we do some things in training and cooperation mainly on special, you know, special type of units, bomb squads, those types of things, but as far as responding to it, they, they don't have the manpower and
Well, don't, don't take what I say as a criticism because it's not.
Right.
I understand completely why the priority system's the way it is. I'm, I believe it, you know, it's a, it's the, but it, but it is a growing perception problem and I think we've got to find some way to wire around that.
Okay.
Larry?
Hey, just a quick commercial and see if I'm on the right track. We have, uh, three, three of the community relations officers that, uh, Councilman Ryan was talking about, I'm familiar, LaRusse, Eppleway and Burkeen. I, I don't know who was in Spring Lake, but I've heard been enough to those and the Yoda supposedly of communication, uh, community relations officers was, had a great article in the paper, Sergeant Eppleway. I've heard him preach a number of times, one of the biggest deterrents to crime that we have and one of the best ways to fight crime is through neighborhood patrols and neighborhood involvement. And, uh, I think this is a time that we all ought to get together and encourage the neighbors to organize, uh, neighborhood associations if they don't have one, get involved in neighborhood patrols or neighborhood watch, whatever you want to call it, and be the eyes and ears for the police who can't be everywhere, even with the additional officers we're putting out there, can't be everywhere like the neighbors are.
Right. No, I, I totally agree with that. I mean, I tell people, police don't solve crime. It's citizens that solve crime. We get our information from citizens and they solve the crimes. They get involved and those neighborhood associations that are very active have been, done incredible jobs with helping clean up some of their neighborhoods. So, but it's, you know, it takes a combination of things and I know planning's working on some things as far as revitalizing some, some neighborhoods where, meaning you, you talked about code enforcement earlier. One of the most valuable things we saw when we did the weed and seed programs where we actually did make a difference in, in a lot of neighborhoods that we were in using that grant funding, well, police was huge. Having extra police in a small area was hugely clearing up the crime, but the other side of that was code enforcement, cleaning up the neighborhoods. And we probably had, we had more feedback and more comments about those, about having access to code enforcement because we would hire code enforcement extra with grant money just for that weed and seed area, a small area and they were able to give special attention to that. And that we probably got more positive feedback from code enforcement than we did from police officers, from having police officers. So, but you're absolutely right. I mean, it's, it's getting them involved and a lot of times what you find is if they know they have a police officer, if they do have a police officer that's in that neighborhood and they get to know that police officer, which you can do if you have, if you have more of those resources, then it kind, it kind of empowers that neighborhood that in some neighborhoods, they're living in fear. They're afraid to get out and do stuff because of, you know, some gang house down the street. Uh, and, and having a police officer more in those neighborhoods, uh, gives them a little bit more courage and more support if they know they have that.
I'd like to wrap this up, but one more question?
Why, just one, one quick comment?
Okay, comment and then a question.
For the seniors, you didn't mention, uh, you mentioned a lot of the programs you've got going for the youth, but the Oklahoma City Police Department in conjunction with the, uh, Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office supports the triad organization, does it not?
Yes, it does.
And there's an excellent avenue for seniors to get involved to, uh, deal with this perception of, of personal fear.
Right. It's a, it's a growing program between the county and us and, and providing information to seniors and actually getting them to volunteer.
John?
Um, I have a comment, uh, not a question. I just want to thank, uh, Chief City, uh, and his staff. Uh, the overtime program, I do believe, uh, is working, especially when you look at, uh, housing development such as Sooner Haven, um, where at one point in time, every other day, uh, you was having a shooting or a stabbing or something, uh, in, in that particular housing development. Uh, I lost a classmate, uh, not too long ago, uh, and who, uh, so it happened was visiting, uh, the Sooner Haven, uh, housing complex and he got killed. Uh, so, I see crime, uh, all the time. I know what it's like to wake up two, three o'clock in the morning to hear gunshots. Uh, so, I am a strong supporter, uh, that we definitely need more police, uh, patrolling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Ready to adjourn the finance committee? All right. We'll adjourn the finance committee, reconvene the council meeting, items from council. James, you have anything for us today? Ed? Larry? Pete? David? Meg?
Yipes, yes. I'm going to jump in here, take advantage of
We were on a roll there.
Just a second, I apologize. Um, a couple of very quick things. I want to congratulate the dynamic team of Allison Bailey and Kristen Vales, uh, who did a Better Block, uh, Saturday down at Farmer's Market despite the temperature and the wind and the, there was a huge crowd. Um, they did a wonderful job, striping, painting, there were pop-up shops, there were food trucks, there were, there was a restaurant inside Urban Agrarian Market and, you know, I think what's really important about the Better Block concept is it's not, it's not a festival. It's not creating a happening that draws people there. It's really just tweaking a couple of things that cause people to come to a venue and it, it seems to me that, that, uh, they've really, uh, created a template for the Farmer's Market that hopefully, uh, the property owners down there will latch on to and, and make a permanent event. It was just wonderful. Um, I also want, really like to thank and congratulate Debbie Martin and, uh, the leadership of Oklahoma City class. They adopted Emerson School this year as their project and a group of them, um, put on a prom for the students. Uh, it was Saturday evening at the Petroleum Club and the Thunder, um, provided balloon arches and all sorts of decorations. The kids decorated the tables. Um, our friend Frank, uh, from AMSA, uh, was the DJ and provided free DJ services for them and they had strobe lights and the girls were able to go to youth services and select gowns and they just looked fabulous and they danced. I didn't stay till the wee hours, but I stayed long enough to learn how to line dance. I think it was, was really, really a nice evening. Um, and thirdly, perhaps on behalf of Councilman Ryan, I'd like to thank the railroad for finally working on our crossings at Tenth, Ninth and Eighth Street. Uh, you can actually go across Tenth Street now in a low-slung car and not bounce across there and we've called them out a number of times for not doing the work and so I really want to thank them for, for taking care of that.
All right. John? Pat?